Okay, I'm calling the September 23rd, 2020 meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Irvin?
Present.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Present.
Commissioner Lewin?
Present.
Commissioner Song?
Present.
Vice Chairman Wu Tsui?
Here.
And Chair Wiermuk. We have a quorum of six members present.
Okay, can I get a report on the posting of the agenda?
Madam Chair, the agenda was posted on Thursday, September the 17th. This meeting has been noticed and posted in accordance with state law.
Thank you, and are there any comments regarding the acceptance of the agenda? There being none, can I get a motion to accept the agenda? Moved by Commissioner Hirschbein? Separated by me, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, are there public comments at this time, Director Fag?
Madam Chair, we have two individuals who signed up to speak under public comment. If you'll give me just a moment to bring them on the phone.
Okay, given that we're doing this by phone, do I need to give a description of public comment?
Yes, if you would go ahead and read that description into the record.
This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on Consent Calendar and Other Agenda Items and Items of General Interest Within the Subject Matter Jurisdiction of the Commission. Please note the Planning Commission is prohibited from taking action on items not listed in the Posted Agenda. Three minutes will be allowed for each speaker. Testimony for public hearings may be offered at this time or at the time of the hearing. Members of the public who want to comment on Item 4A are directed to comment under this section of the agenda. And 4A is...
Okay.
The food desert.
Madam Chair, we have our first public speaker, Mr. Talala. You have three minutes to make your comments. You are live with the Planning Commission. You may go ahead and begin.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. Hope everyone is well. Basically, what we're trying to do is we've rebranded in the last few months, and it's something we've always wanted to do.
Could you please identify yourself?
I'm sorry?
Would you identify yourself?
Absolutely. Tarif Talala, co-owner at The Village, formerly Village Pub.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So basically, we're trying to rebrand. We've been a success at night, but we, you know, we've always wanted, we've always been big on the food aspect. We hired a great chef. We've been trying very hard to create more appealing menus, more tasteful food. And for that end, we need to change our business model a little bit. We've come up with new menus. We need to modify our hours. And we were hoping to be able to open at 6:00 a.m., so we can cater to breakfast people. We're trying to change our identity. We're trying to change our business model. We're trying to change the place and the way it looks physically to make it more appealing to diners. And we were hoping we could open at 6:00 a.m. instead of the current 10:00 a.m. to serve breakfast. We definitely are not intending to have any kind of lively or environment or any kind of festivities. All we want to do is serve good food, possibly sports. Often, we have people from Europe that want to watch soccer. We do not intend for sure to have any kind of... Hello?
You may continue.
We can still hear you.
We do not intend to have any kind of live music whatsoever, no DJ. All we want to do is just regular background music like any other restaurant does, so that people can have a conversation with a little bit of privacy. Just normal things that every restaurant does. Just nothing loud at all, just breakfast. We have no intentions of upsetting any of the neighbors or, you know, the community. We have nothing but respect for the city and for the people of Palm Springs at large. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
And Mr. Talala, if you will sign on to Zoom and be available for questions when Item 3A is discussed. Thank you.
I will, thank you. Bye-bye.
Yes, one moment, please.
You are live with the Planning Commission. You have three minutes to make your comments, and you're speaking on Item 3A.
Thank you. My name is David Mariner. I'm also a partner with Tarif Talala at The Village. I have been here for several years. We are really excited. In the midst of chaos and COVID, we have really dug deep in. And me personally, I have, if you come to the building, you will see a physical transformation that is a real beautification of the place. We really loved on the building. We really wanted to cater to the actual attitude of Palm Springs and what it reflected. It's our heart, and so that's why we changed our name to The Village. And while we are really good at night and we have an exciting format that's been successful, as COVID was here and came into the city, it actually brought in some really interesting changes for us where we could force ourselves to have to be more of a restaurant first, as those were the only essential items that were allowed. And because of social distancing, it really put a focus on our chef, and our chefs stepped up and hit a grand slam and came up with a brand-new menu. And then we started molding from their new brunch menu. And when more and more people said, "Man, we would really love to eat breakfast here. You have some of the greatest brunch food out there." And we were like, "You know what? That is something that we would really absolutely love to do." And so we are requesting that in top of our, to expand our restaurant, that we can be open at 6:00 a.m. and really cater to another demographic in our city, the people that wake up early. We're expecting an even more mature audience that, you know, that doesn't sleep in. We want to cater to everyone. That's why we're called The Village. It's not just one, people that like the nightlife or the people that like live music during the day. We wanted to cater to everyone. And as we're growing, we have like goals. We want to win a Zakit Award for the best food in the valley. You know, we want to win Best Breakfast in the Valley. We want to win those Palm Springs awards. And so we wanted to ease the concern of, I had a chance to read the emails. We do not want live music before 10:00 a.m. We just want the background music, you know, just at the noise ordinance level of this is. We're not trying to create any rifts there. Where, you know, as Tarif said, we also have good soccer from Europe that is on a lot of channels that come a little bit before 10:00 a.m., and they always ask us, "Can you please open a little bit early?" And we're like, "Well, let's see if we can." A lot of the Europe games for the NFL are often at 6:00 a.m. just due to the time change. And so we're just trying to be an asset to Palm Springs, that there is not a lot of places to go for breakfast. I know that my wife and I try to, we take pictures at Denny's, and we were at Broken Yoke, but Broken Yoke no longer exists. And so there's just one or two places to eat breakfast, and it's really disheartening. And as we begin to open up and as the city begins to heal, we want to be part of that rejuvenation of the flow of the life of Palm Springs. So thank you, that's all I have to say. I appreciate your time.
Mr. Mariner, thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Okay, we are at the Consent Calendar, and the only item is the approval of the minutes of July 29, 2020. Can I have, are there any questions or can I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes. Or the Consent Calendar, sorry.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I think there is one recusal.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to recuse, I was not present. Thank you.
Okay. We're now going into public hearings. The first three items that we have are time extensions. And I would like to just ask the Commission if we can keep these items brief and have brief staff reports. I would have moved these to go on the Consent Calendar had they not been public hearing items. On 2A, can I have a staff report, please? Oh, sorry. I'm getting a little informal. Sorry about that. Request of 1466 Holdings LLC for a two-year extension of time for the entitlements to remodel the Skylark Hotel and operate a new cafe and restaurant space at 1466 North Palm Canyon Drive. And the recommendation is for a one-year extension of time. That may be the year, the time length may be a comment item. Staff report.
Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners, as you've noted, this is an extension of time request by 1466 Holdings LLC for the Tangerine Project, which was approved by the Planning Commission back on June 27, 2018. The project is the Skylark Hotel, which is at the northeast corner of Camino Montevista and North Palm Canyon. It does extend all the way back to North Indian Canyon Drive. As you recall, or for the benefit of the public, the project does involve a facade remodel of both the Palm Canyon frontage, which you see here, as well as the Indian Canyon Drive frontage, which is shown in this perspective. The project also includes a conditional use permit for the operation of the cafe at the southwest corner, which is the top right of the screen here, as well as another restaurant space at the back of the property on the left side of the screen. So you can see those highlighted on the screen. As I've noted, this project was approved back on June 27, 2018. It is valid for a period of two years. The applicant requested a two-year extension of time prior to the entitlement expiration. And just for your own benefit of the background, there have been permits issued for this project. A pool remodel was issued in August of 2018. The new laundry area, bathrooms, trash enclosure, those were approved back in October of 2018. And exterior lighting and a car charging station permit was issued back in December of 2018. The applicant has gone through permit reviews for the exterior remodel as well as the proposed improvements on the interior for the cafe space and restaurant spaces. So they have made significant progress in moving the project forward. Staff has provided findings and support of this application in the draft resolution attached to your report. Again, I would just note that this is, the applicant has requested a two-year extension of time, and staff is recommending a one-year extension.
Thank you. Are there any questions with staff? Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yeah, why are you recommending one instead of two?
For a couple of reasons. Typically, staff, when we bring these forward to the Commission, we, our general recommendation, kind of as a policy, is to recommend one year. And then the other is that the applicant has made significant progress in getting a permit for the project. So for those reasons, that is why staff is recommending one year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Song?
Yes, I noticed on the prior actions that a permit was ready, but it was not pulled in March of 2019. Was that due to financial issues on funding the project?
I believe it is related to that, but I'd let the applicant answer that question.
There being no other questions, can we open the public hearing?
Madam Chair, we should have the applicant available via Zoom. If we can ask the control room to bring them in. There are no members of the public who have requested to speak on this item. Madam Chair, if you'll give us just a moment.
Chair, can I say something real quick?
Yes.
Maria, I looked at the related relevance to the actions. In March of 19, they received the application. They didn't receive the permit.
On the bottom, it says that the plans are permit-ready of that same paragraph.
Sorry.
Madam Chair, the applicant is available, and we would go ahead and ask if the applicant has any presentation. He may go ahead and begin speaking now.
Am I unneeded?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I just have just a couple of remarks to make, if that's okay. I realize that the Commission's staff report has recommended approval for a one-year extension. And as I understand it, I can apply for another if necessary. However, I request that the Commission consider the staff, reconsider the staff recommendation and approve the two-year extension at this time for the following reasons. This year has been a devastating one, from a personal and business perspective for everyone, and it's something that is going to take a lot of time to recover from. We're not done with the pandemic by any means. We're heading into the fall and winter flu season and have no idea whether things are going to get better or worse in the coming months. In other words, there's still a lot of uncertainty, and therefore, additional time is appropriate and warranted. I have self-financed this project, and the financial toll of the pandemic has set me back significantly. It's not easy to get financing or raise capital right now for a non-flag seasonal boutique property in the hospitality industry. Notwithstanding, as you are aware, I have demonstrated my commitment to the project from a time and financial perspective, and will continue to do so. Before commencing work on the CUP, however, I will first need to upgrade the electrical panel, which requires the installation of a transformer on the property, new switchgear, multiple subpanels, and new wiring throughout the property. This work also comes with a price tag exceeding $250,000. I'll be commencing that work as soon as I can obtain the necessary approvals. A one-year extension will only give me until June of 2021. For all intents and purposes, we are already in October of 2020, which leaves only eight months before expiration. Additionally, ideally, I'd like to recoup some business during the upcoming high season, if that should so, you know, happen before commencing work on the CUP, because once I commence work on the CUP, I will more than likely have to shut down operations. Finally, honestly, I just need more time and don't want to have to come back again and ask you, especially when it cost me another $5,000 to do so. Thank you, that's all I got.
Thank you. Can you stay available for questions? And can you answer Commissioner Song's question?
Which is what?
Commissioner, do you want to repeat your question?
I believe the candidate answered my question in his statement.
He did, thank you. Does anybody else have questions? No, thank you very much. The matter is now before the Commission. Commissioner Song?
I perfectly understand how difficult it is during this time. But in addition to that, for any development, to get a new transformer and deal with utility companies is also very much time-consuming. So therefore, with the challenges that the applicant has expressed, I make a motion that we allow a two-year extension.
Can I have a second to that motion? Commissioner Hirschbein? That's a second. Is there any discussion or can we have a roll call on this? There being no discussion, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Hirschbein? Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes. Sorry.
Commissioner Lewin?
Yes.
Commissioner Song? Vice Chairman Wu Tsui?
Yes.
And Chair Wiermuk?
Yes, and I just want to say that we're very sympathetic to what you have to go through right now with the pandemic and doing hotel upgrades. So we wish you the best and hope that you get this completed.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Moving right along to 2B, a request by Richard Pantelli on behalf of the Disc exit, so, I'm not pronouncing that correctly, LLC for a one-year extension of time for a major architectural application for the construction of five industrial buildings and a conditional use permit to operate a cannabis manufacturing and cultivation facility within five industrial buildings totaling 35,496 square feet, located on the east side of Rupert Street between 19th and 20th Avenues. The request is for, this request was for a one-year, or this request was for a two-year extension, and the staff is recommending a one-year extension. Staff report, please.
Members of the Planning Commission, so there are two applications involved with this request. The first one is for a major architectural app that was approved by the Planning Commission on December 13, 2017. And the conditional use permit was approved by the Planning Commission on September 12, 2018. And as you well know, these two approvers are only valid for two years to either commence use or to commence construction activities. The, in requesting for the extension of time, the applicant indicated that, like most projects approved in the northern part of the city, they had problems in obtaining the necessary permits for wastewater treatment, sewer, and drainage issues. Those were the main issues relative to the delay in commencing construction with this project. As you will see in the exhibit that staff included in this report, there has not been any changes to either the site plan, the project itself, or the overall site planning of this project. In, like, like we've presented to the Planning Commission before, in the past, for projects in the northern part of the city, the applicant is required to obtain certain permits from the states, the county, and some local jurisdictions. And because of these, and because of the moratorium that's been imposed on sewer construction in that part of the city, they continue to experience delay. But right before the conclusion of the staff report, the applicant had indicated to staff that they have been able to secure permits. But because I didn't have any documentation to those, I did not include them in the staff report. However, I can also inform the Planning Commission that so far, at the staff level, the applicants have submitted a grading plan, those who have been approved, they've submitted a WQMP, they've submitted all the technical studies, including the hydrology study for the site, and fees have been calculated. So once those are paid and they actually obtain all the necessary permits, they can commence construction. Staff was able to make all the necessary findings in support of this extension of time. And as indicated by Madam Chair, the applicant actually requested for a two-year request. However, as explained by David earlier, staff is recommending a one-year extension of time, given the fact that staff is aware of all the work that has been done by the applicant, and staff is of the opinion that one year should be sufficient for the applicant to move ahead with this project. That concludes staff report. The recommendation again is for a one-year extension of time. However, staff will leave that at the pleasure of the Commission. I'm available to answer any of your questions, and I think the applicants are also available to answer any question from the Commission. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Hirschbein?
So, staff, I don't understand. In the second line on your subject, it says they're requesting a one-year extension. But you just told us they're asking for a two-year extension. So which is it? Are they asking for a one-year extension or are they asking for a two-year extension?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Actually, they did request for a two-year. So I did attach the letter of request in your package. They asked for a two-year extension.
So that second line on your subject header is incorrect, then?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
I have one question, which is, does an extension, what is the cost for an extension request?
So as you may recall, extension of time used to be a new business. However, the code has been changed to make it a public hearing. So the cost of the application itself and the cost of providing labels for public hearing is almost $5,000.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There being no other questions, can we open the public hearing, please?
If we could have the control room bring Mr. Pantelli and Mr. Kershner on to Zoom. Madam Chair, we have the applicant team, Mr. Pantelli and Mr. Kershner. No members of the public have requested to speak under this item.
Thank you.
Mr. Pantelli or Mr. Kershner, you may go ahead and begin your comments.
This is Rick Pantelli. Thank you very much for taking the time to review this. I really don't have a lot to say, other than we've been working diligently on getting this project through fruition. And I believe that the Planning Commission has stated our case properly. And if given permission to go forward with this extension, we'll be able to secure this project and get it up and running over the next year. Can you hear me?
Yes, Madam Chair, your microphone is off.
Oh, is that your complete testimony?
Yes, I don't believe there's much necessary. I think Edward has laid it out succinctly.
And just for the record, is your... And just for the record, is your request still for two years or for one year? Uh, given the change in getting your, the permits you needed for the, um,
Normally, I would say one year, but because of the COVID, I would, and everything becoming slower, if two years is possible, and it won't jeopardize the extension, I would ask for two years. But I, uh, that's where, that's where we're at.
Uh, are there questions for Mr. Pantelli from members of the commission? There being none, thank you very much, and the matter is now before the commission?
Thank you.
Is there any comment or is there a motion? Commissioner Lewin?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Much like the previous applicant, um, I would, I would support a two-year extension of this. Uh, I, I think we need to be flexible with people and there's, there's nothing in this application that says that they're dragging their heels. There, those are tough issues to face. Um, so I would vote in favor of the staff recommendation, but I would rather that the commission support my motion to do a two-year extension for the applicant.
Is there a second? Commissioner Hirschbein is the second. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, the matter is, uh, before, before the commission. And can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewin?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rudzie?
Yes.
And Chair Wermuth.
Yes. Uh, and we wish you the best of luck. The matter passes unanimously. Okay, uh, this 2C is Garnet Properties, two thousand fourteen LLC requesting a one-year extension of time for the construction of a, uh, a hundred and three thousand six hundred square foot cannabis operation and dispensary facility consisting of four separate, uh, buildings located at five five oh West Garnet Road and Interstate ten off-ramp. Uh, staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we are trying to get the, um, the applicant to, uh, log on to the Zoom. So if he's listening, he can log on. Oh, he's there. Okay. If we could have the, um, slides up in just a minute. So, Madam Chair, this is an application for a one-year time extension for the construction of a one hundred and three thousand six hundred square foot cannabis operation and dispensary facility consisting of four buildings located at, uh, West Garnet Road and the Interstate ten off-ramp. Let me show you some slides here to orient, uh, the commission. This project was approved by the planning commission back in January of twenty eighteen. So the time, the two-year time, timeframe is, uh, fast approaching. The applicant has, uh, just to show some, uh, slight, sl- slides of the site plan, the, the buildings that are proposed, uh, landscaping and then the three, three D rendering of the design. So the applicant has made efforts to, uh, move the project forward by submitting building permits, which are currently in plan check. So there are, he has received corrections from the building department and also it, the, the project is, uh, submitted street improvements and precise grading plans with the engineering department, and they're also in plan check. The applicant has made substantial efforts, uh, by developing these construction documents and paid building and environmental, I'm sorry, engineering review fees. As was stated in the previous plan, the project is in the north end of town and there are issues with the Mission Springs Water District and finalizing, uh, the sewer connection. So we are aware of these difficulties and, uh, developing water and sewer service. Uh, there's an ongoing discussion with the water district to find a resolution for this project and to help advance it. So the applicant has made substantial efforts in getting the project to move forward. Uh, and we are recommending that a one-year time extension be, uh, granted. That concludes my report and the applicant should be on the line.
Are there questions of staff, uh, of staff? There being none, if the applicant, oh, Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yeah, same question. Did they request a one-year or a two-year extension?
They, um, well, Ed, by, um, ask, the staff, the applicant would prefer a two-year extension, but the app, the staff is recommending a one-year.
Thank you.
He may address that.
Madam Chair, Mr. Fine is the applicant, and if we could bring him on to speak. There are no members of the public who've asked to speak under public comment on this item.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, commissioners. Uh, my name is Michael Fine and I am the applicant. Um, I do believe that, uh, staff has also addressed our progress amply in, in his presentation and staff report. I might add to that, that we're also being on the freeway, we're dealing with Caltrans encroachment permits, and we're also dealing with Edison as it relates to their commitments for power, uh, necessary power at the site. It's, you know, I, I own, there's one word that I get in all the delays and agencies that I tend to be dealing with currently, and that is COVID. Uh, and I think that probably sums up a whole lot of, uh, a, a good part of our delays, plus issues related to sewer, of course, and other things on the north side of town. Um, with that, uh, I'm available to answering questions that, uh, commission might have.
Are there any questions of the applicant? Uh, there being none, I have one, um, staff indicated that you would prefer a two-year extension?
Yes, I, I definitely would.
Thank you. Uh, there being no questions and there, uh, no members of the public, public hearing is closed and the matter is before the commission. Are there any, um, any comments or can I get a motion? There being no comments, I'll make a motion for, um, for the staff recommendation, but a two-year extension. Is there a second?
I'll second that. Paul Lewin.
Um, okay, there's a motion and a second. Uh, can we call the roll, please? Is that a comment, Commissioner Hirschbein?
No, sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, can we call the roll, please?
Yes. Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewin?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Song?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chairman Rudzie?
Yes.
And Chair Wermuth.
Yes. Uh, that is unanimous, uh, acceptable with a two-year extension. Again, we wish the applicant well with the project.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, uh, 2D, a request by Destination Ramon LLC for a conditional use permit and major architectural application for the redevelopment of pad site B to include the demolition of an existing building with a lot split for the construction of two quick-service restaurants with drive-throughs located at five six oh one East Ramon Road. Uh, staff report, please. And just as a note to the commission, there were additional material sent out by the planner, I believe, yesterday. I'm hoping that everybody was in receipt of them and had a chance to review them. I'm taking that as a yes. Uh, staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I would like to just give a brief description of what the project consists of. Uh, the project consists of a demolition of the existent, existent vacant Office Depot building that's located at the Destination Ramon Shopping Center, which is where the, a large, uh, box Walmart shopping center, uh, currently is. And it will also consist of splitting the lot into two lots and the construction of two quick-service restaurants with drive-through, drive-through facilities, uh, which requires a conditional use permit with a major architectural attached to it. So in orienting the, the planning commission, this is the aerial showing the Office Depot building uh, that will be demolished and the two, the lot split into two with the two quick-service restaurants built, uh, on this site. The project was first reviewed by the Architectural Advisory Committee on June fifteenth. Let me get to the, on June fifteenth of this year, as a pre-application, the planning staff requested that the applicant submit plans and go through a pre-application review by the Architectural Advisory Committee. At the, at this meeting, the AAC made seven comments on the project. And we're going to go through each one of these and, uh, as we go through the slides, we will show where they have made the corrections or, uh, reoriented the, the project to reflect the comments of the planning, of the AAC. So number one that they wanted was, uh, to show the project relationship with the shopping center. And that was this previous slide here. So as you can see, this will be the lot split, uh, of, of the one lot where the Office Depot building is now. The area that is around Gene Autry Trail and Ramon, East Ramon Road is an auto-oriented, large shopping center developed area. And this is an area that has a lot of auto-dependent, uh, type of uses. There are other quick-service restaurants in the area, including the Del Taco, which is located in the, in the shopping center adjacent to where the, the new quick-service restaurants are proposed. There's also, uh, a Goodies Cafe, a Jack in the Box to the north, a Subway across the street. And then, um, all the restaurants that are located at the Springs, including, um, Five Guys, Panda Express, Panera Bread. So this area is known for its auto-oriented, um, shopping experiences that are taking place at this area. So number two that the AAC was looking to, um, to do is to increase landscaping near drive-through. So part of the project, uh, is to construct these two quick-service restaurants, which is shown on the site plan. The proposal is to have two standalone buildings. One is for Raising Cane's, which is a three thousand one hundred and seventy-two square foot single-story structure, which is the one that's on the west lot. And then a Starbucks, which is located next to the Del Taco, which is two thousand two hundred square feet, single-story building also. When the AAC reviewed the project, this is the pro, this is the slide, or this slide is the site plan that was reviewed by the AAC at the time. So I want to point out some projects or some changes to the project, which include, they have a double drive-through that feeds into the ordering window and then the pickup on the west side. The AAC felt that this orientation was, uh, could be improved. So when the new plan, they've moved the building farther away from San Luis Rey, added parking along the west side instead of parking here in the middle of the lot with a trash dumpster that was located towards the street. And also the building was, had the front door oriented to the parking lot with outdoor seating on the east side of the prop, of the building. So the plan was to reorient the building, add the trash dumpster to the rear, add the outdoor seating on the west side of the building so that there's views of the mountain. They still have a double-loaded drive aisle, which feeds into a ordering canopy that will show some, uh, different slides and then the pay and order pickup window on the east side. So in this design, you have to make two trips around the building. So when you pick up your, your order, you have to go back around and then out the driveway into the larger Destination Ramon Shopping Center. So that is why in this plan, there's a double row of cars that queue for the drive-through and then a pass-by lane that allows people that have picked up their orders to exit, uh, the site. For the Starbucks, which is located on the west, on the east property, the building was farther closer to Ramon Road. The planning commission felt that, I'm sorry, the AAC felt that eliminating this middle parking area would reduce the pavement surface. And they moved the building farther to the south, allowing a larger area for landscaping, which will show soon in the landscape plan. So the middle parking has been eliminated, uh, and allowing more green space. The trash enclosure for the Starbucks is located adjacent to the, the Del Taco, which is on the east side. So once again, this is what the AAC reviewed and what the planning commission is here to discuss today. So moving forward, uh, they submitted a landscape plan. And one of the comments from the, the AAC was to add landscaping at the bends of the, of the drive-through. So the Raising Cane's drive-through and then the Starbucks drive-through. So when we flip to the next slide, which is the, the AAC reviewed slide, you'll see that the landscaping that the AAC reviewed is, um, not, not present. And this plan that they're proposing has more landscaping in front of Starbucks and at the drive-through bends, uh, which was requested by the AAC. Once again, this is what was reviewed by the AAC with the, um, drive-through on this side, on the west side. So moving forward, there was a discussion earlier from the planning commission members about what trees would be eliminated, which are currently on the site. So this plan shows the red, I'm sorry, the red diamonds are trees that are existing and to be removed. And the green circles are trees that will be, uh, either relocated or, or continue to, uh, can stay in their location. There is a plan showing the types of trees that will be plant, used, which are acacias, uh, palaverdes and various shrubs and, uh, shrubs and bushes and lanthana and other understory and accent plants. So moving on to some street views of what, what the corner will look like. This is showing the Raising Cane's and the Starbucks. This is looking, uh, from the corner of San Luis Rey and East Ramon Road. A closer view and the planning commission, I'm sorry, the AAC wanted a better point of view on the block wall that will be added of the perimeter, which is going to be a split-face, integrated reddish color, terracotta color. And this is the same block wall that is used throughout the entire Destination Ramon Shopping Center. So it will match what is currently there. I'd like to point out that there's a bus stop that will remain, which is a very, um, heavily-used bus stop here. And there will be a connection for pedestrians to, uh, go through the wall and connect to the, the coffee shop and the restaurant. And that's this connection right here in the middle. This is the pedestrian connection. And looking at Raising Cane's, uh, the planning commission is not reviewing signage today. That will come back to the planning commission as a sign package or a sign program amendment to the Destination Ramon, uh, approved sign and program. So a comment of the AAC was, would it be possible to reduce building heights? Uh, the building currently is nineteen feet tall. Uh, you'll see that it has, uh, various types of block and stone face. Uh, there's metal trellises on the, this is the west side with the outdoor seating. In this slide, it shows the, the drive-through queuing line and then the ordering canopy, which is located here. So it's a double ordering, which leads into a single lane for pay and pickup. Uh, the applicant will be, uh, able to discuss, uh, how this operation will work. And then another slide showing the relationship between Starbucks and Raising Cane's. When the Raising Cane's building first came When the Raising Canes building first came into the AAC review, it had a different facia or facade. It had a brick facade that the AAC felt was not consistent with other materials in the shopping center or within Palm Springs, the desert, so they removed the brick. Go back. They removed the brick here and put a cultured stone veneer in a tan color. So this is what they're proposing and what the AAC reviewed. Moving forward, there are other, this, this is the rear of the restaurant that will face the east parking lot, I'm sorry, the south parking lot, and then this is the drive-through order and pickup windows. And you have building elevations with the materials in your packet. Looking at the internal workings of the restaurant, the front of the building will face Ramon Road with the outdoor seating facing west, and the back of the house operations towards the south and the main parking, parking lot of Destination Ramon. A roof plan that shows all mechanical equipment will be hidden from view, and then a detail of the trash dumpster, which is on the south side of the parking lot. And looking at Starbucks, Starbucks is a 2,200 square foot building with a building height of 20 feet to the shed roof, the slope roof corner. You'll see that this is the side that faces Ramon Road, which the, there's a one pickup and pay window, and other views of how the building operates, how it works, the different types of materials that are being used, building elevations, and then material boards. There's a photometric plan that is in your, your packet. They, we worked with them to reduce the lighting, the lumens that are proposed on the site. I know this is difficult to see, but it does meet our outdoor lighting standards. There's a series of photographs on the next couple of slides that show the existing Office Depot building and the landscaping that is currently there, and I'll go through these quickly. You'll see that they are mature plants, palm trees, palaverde trees. These are the trees that will be removed because the building and the drive-through queuing lanes, the parking lots will be in this current area. Once again, this is the bus stop that's there now, and the, the large building, the Office Depot building will be demolished. Just some slides of what the site looks like now. So in your, in your staff report, there are findings that the Planning Commission needs to make in order to approve a conditional use permit. There is sufficient off-street parking. They're proposing 37 spaces. Plus, you have all the parking that is associated with the large shopping center of Walmart. So there is sufficient parking for the site. As I mentioned earlier, the signage will come back to the Planning Commission as an amendment to the sign program. And once the commission gets into discussions, we can talk about the 11 comments that the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, the AAC made. However, staff believes that they have made sufficient revisions to the plan that, from the comments of the AAC, such as the building heights are appropriate. The Planning Commission will make a, will refer this back to AAC for a final review, and we've scheduled that for sometime in October, if the project can move forward today. So as I mentioned, there are, there are findings that need to be made for the conditional use permit, also architectural review. The environmental assessment, we feel it's an infill and it meets the sequel requirements. In your additional information that was given to you, that was emailed to the Planning Commission yesterday, there are corrections made to the conditions of approval, and that includes changes to the hours of operation for PLN 1. Also, the project did go before the Riverside County Airport Land Use Commission, and there was a series of seven conditions that they wanted to attach to the approval. And there's a letter from the AC, I'm sorry, the ALAC Commission that you, for your information. So Chair, that concludes my report, and the applicant is available for additional comments. And they do have a presentation, and we'll switch to that now.
Are we going to do their presentation before we ask questions of staff?
Well, you, we could ask questions of staff.
Yeah, I would rather ask questions of staff now. Are there questions? Commissioner Maruzzi.
I'm just curious, how, how old is the Office Depot building? When was it constructed?
The project was first approved in 2004, so it's been 15 years, 10, 15 years.
Amazing to me. In 15 years, this building is no longer of any use. Okay, thanks.
Are there other questions? I have, I have one, if there aren't others, which is, can you explain the hours of operation and the changes? I was a bit surprised to see a 3:00 AM closing on Saturday and Sunday, and I'm, was wondering what is typical of fast food approvals in the city, and is that excessive?
The, the Del Taco next door is a 24-hour operation, so it's basically left up to, I mean, the conditional use permit can put caps on hours of operation. So it's up to the Planning Commission. The, the request by the applicant is how they feel that they can operate their restaurant, the business.
And just what, what is typical in other shopping centers for fast food operations?
There are several restaurants. There's a, there's a McDonald's in Smoke Tree, Smoke Tree Village that is open 24 hours during season, and I think it closes at midnight other times. There's Taco, or Del, Taco Bell, which is the north end of town, and a McDonald's, they also run 24-hour operations and then alter them during off-season times. So there are some that are 24 hours and some that close at midnight.
Thank you. There being no other questions of staff, can we open the public hearing?
Madam Chair, you have Mr. Rothbart and Ms. Wolf representing the applicants. There are no members of the public who have requested to speak, other than the applicants. So with that, Mr. Rothbart, if you'd like to begin.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Before I get started, I just want to point out, I, I think Glenn said that there were 37 parking spaces, I think it's 60. Few users. My name is Stan Rothbart. I'm the owner and original developer of Destination Ramon, which is the Walmart-anchored shopping center at the intersection of Ramon and San Luis Rey. We're pleased to present to this body tonight our newest proposal at Destination Ramon. It was over 15 years ago that, when we first worked with the city on this project, and from that collaboration, we've developed a project that still today receives accolades over its landscaping, its architecture, and its design. We look forward to continuing that cooperative effort with the city. We are experiencing a dramatic shift in retail. Customers are now making many of their purchases via the internet. In-store shopping is declining, and as a result, we're seeing the downsizing of brick-and-mortar operations, which is really the response to your earlier question. There aren't tenants anymore to fill those mid-sized boxes. That is what has happened to Office Depot, who elected not to renew their lease, and in fact, they closed their store over a year ago. Their move affords us an opportunity, and an opportunity to bring in tenants that are better suited to draw customers to the center. Raising Canes and Starbucks are two ideal types of those. They're ideally suited to meet that objective. We have worked diligently to design and plan and a project that possesses connectivity and buildings that are unique and harmonious. We hope you similarly agree. I'd like to spend just a few moments to review some of the major features of our project, although Glenn did set this up early in his staff report that I don't have that much to say. Glenn, can you turn to slide two? So this is the before and after. On the before, you see the 18,000 square foot Office Depot that dominates the hard corner, and the after, which is two more modestly sized buildings, one 3,200 square feet, the other 2,200 square feet with substantially more landscaping. And I'd like to point out that the Office Depot's building height is 32 feet, existing, and, and the new building heights will be 19 and 20 feet respectively. The after, we're completed with the construction, it opens up a view corridor into the site, and it has a lot more relationship to the landscape. Can you go to the next slide? Landscaping has been one of our, you know, most talked-about features. We get, we get unsolicited comments about how beautiful the landscaping is. It's owed to AAC. Glenn identified the items that AAC Commissioners suggested we make, we modify, and I think, with the exception of not adjusting the height, we, we, we did every single one. We think that that collaboration is producing a better product. I would like to point out, I think, like I said, the landscaping is such a significant aspect of the project, I wanted to point out some numbers to you. On palm trees, 11 of the palm trees that are currently on this property remain in their current location. Five palm trees will be relocated on, but within the project. We add one new palm tree, so there's not, not a loss of any palm trees, in fact, there's a gain. On trees, 20 trees remain in place. 20 trees will be removed, but for those removed, 20 trees, we're adding in 39 more trees. So we're really swapping two-for-one on trees. We picked up over 2,200 square feet of landscape area and increased the percentage of the site 14% for landscaping and eliminated asphalt. So we think we've done a terrific job, and some of it is a result of the coming out of AAC and listening to their astute comments, which we think have made it a better project. Next slide, please. We're very excited over the architecture on the Starbucks. We are, we like architecture, we're into it, we, we try to, to use as much as we can. The proposed Starbucks design is inspired with a mid-century modern building, featuring a single-direction roof slope. This feature creates a subtle difference in the building shape, which gives some diversity in the retail pads, which we feel is necessary to allow individual buildings and their tenants to be unique and identifiable. The colors chosen for the building are both complementary to both Starbucks and the rest of the center, with the use of light yellow tones, green and white accents, and dark gray room. The wood tile elements bring warmth and definition to the entry and further soften the building with a natural wood appearance. The more exaggerated entry awning adds definition to the entry. Customer patio space is strategically located and identified by light tan trellis and planter wall. We feel the building achieves the intent of having the character of Starbucks while standing out as unique and yet complementary to the center and the area. Can you go to the next slide, please? And I'd like to point out, we are not asking for an extension. The Raising Canes building will be sited at the corner. We feel that its design will enhance the customer experience. Before I introduce the Raising Canes representative, I would like to point out that our entire team is available on call. We have our landscape architect, we have architects for the Starbucks building, our civil engineer, and, and others. So if, if after Raising Canes makes their presentation, you're interested in any questions of those folks, they're available. At this time, I'd like to introduce Marty Wolf. She's the Design Manager and Fry Chicken Catcher for Raising Canes.
Thank you, Stan. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commission staff. Raising Canes, our concept is simple and unique. We only have one love, quality chicken fingers meals. What we do, the perfect box, fast, friendly, clean, and we have fun. We have a great culture and community. Our six areas of focus is education, feeding the hungry, pet welfare, active lifestyles, business development, and everything else. Raising Canes now has over 527 restaurants across the globe and company-wide, with 27 more to open by the end of this year, with at least 30 already in the state of California. Raising Canes has given back over $10 million to our communities within our six areas of focus. We have added over 6,000 new community partners in the areas of focus as well. Before we even open a restaurant, our entire crew of volunteer, volunteers within our organization within that community, and they're able to donate a minimum of $1,000 to $10,000 on the opening day to that organization. Next, I'd like to talk about our design. Our philosophy is one great restaurant at a time, is fun, friendly, and approachable. Processes in an energetic environment reinforces the cool crew members, is also warm and welcoming, feels unique and, and original. We have our core branded elements that are non-negotiables, such as our exterior murals that are hand-painted by an artist that actually travels to each site. And inside, we have our famous disco balls, hard hat, and salmon, and a salmon that represent how our founder Todd Graves, that made his money to start the company. And of course, we have NFL, college football teams, celebrities, and local community graphics inside our dining. So as you can see, we're bringing the community inside our restaurants as well. We have secondary non-negotiable elements that are, is our one love light design, as you see on top of the padded canopy. Our one entrance, one architectural element tower made out of recycled car hoods, and of course, our namesake, the Blue Dog Banner. Our design is contemporary today, but not modern. Our patio is a dynamic space, an extension of the inside is also pet-friendly, one missable. High level of craftsmanship using genuine materials, welcoming to all demographics, and open kitchen to showcase crew members in the kitchen while having fun. Showcase quality ingredients, cook-to-order, lemons, and tea up front. Food theater experience, making lemonade, coleslaw, and sauce preparation in clear customer view, and of course, lots of landscaping. We pride ourselves with speed of service. With current pandemic, Raising Canes has focused keeping the drive-through open only for safety of our crew members and customers, therefore redesigning our drive-through operation within covered double drive-through for crew members and customers amenities. The double drive-through lanes will start as two lanes, while crew members take orders and payments with tablets, while the cars queue up to a single line to pick up the orders at the second window. The higher level of customer service is part of our brand. We want to provide a shaded area with fans and optional heaters, so that the crew, who is ultimately the ambassador of our first impressions, may in turn get better levels of customer service as a result of more comfortable exterior environment, work environment. This is a more comfortable experience by default, extended to the customer by driving their car under or into proximity of the structure. Additionally, one might just justify, justify that there is not as much solar gain or, or on the side or asphalt due to the additional shaded areas. And lastly, from an aesthetic point, point of view, you could speculate that it is holistic looking. design would further tighten all our hot-rolled steel metal design elements. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, if you, both of you would stay available, are there questions for you from the commission? And let me, are there any questions? Commissioner Song?
Thank you. Could you explain the sequence of the customers in the car when they come into the site and they order? Do they have to go around the building in order to be queued in to order, to place their orders?
Yes, ma'am. So as they're coming in, driving from the south entrance, they wrap around the building and they queue in, they'll pick lane one or two. We'll have crew members out there with tablets taking orders and payment. So as they're driving up, they either bypass the drive-thru at the ordering point double menu. They can simply alternate by ordering with a crew member or at the menu, and then they, after they order, they pass and they form a single line to pick up their meals on the second window.
So what is a usual, when you're in a busy sort of lunch or dinnertime, how many cars would it actually stack within an hour?
Wow, to be exact, for as an hour.
I'm sorry, not an hour, not to be specific. I just want to see, if I go order, would I see a whole ring of cars around the building?
So for our side, for example, if you start at the double-drive-through lane and to the point of picking up your order, it would be about twenty to twenty-five cars. That's how many we will stack in just that area.
Okay, so the...
Go ahead.
And that's the reason why you have a double lane to order and a double lane to stack, correct?
Yeah.
And then, so then, when the cars pick up the order and they go around the building, how do they clear out from the cars that are stacking to place the order?
So could someone turn to the site plan, the slide, slide number three? As you can see, the, as you're driving in, you go around, and then you'll have, there is technically three lanes, one for the pickup area, and then two to drive as a one-way. So there will be, the middle lane would be to go around and get in the drive-thru. And if you're circulating to find a parking space, you can go through the outside lane in and out.
But there will be some maneuvering from the car that picked up the order and the car that is queuing in lane?
Yeah, so they, essentially, they would have to go back around as they came in through the drive-thru and then exit through the outside lane and then go south.
So how do you avoid a car coming in and cutting into order and not, you know, making a loop? Is that by the staff that are standing there with their tablet?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, the second question I have is, if I'm parking, what kind of material change or signage do I know that the front door is north-facing? Because right now, it's sort of a sea of concrete.
If, I don't think on this slide, we have, we have the rest of the renderings that on, if you turn to slide number five, please. So what we're doing, we're enhancing the rear elevation as well, but as they're coming in from the back, we'll have a directional sign in the entrance and the patio. And the signage is what will guide them to the front door if they park their vehicles and dine in.
Yeah, so one of the principles of design and the definition between the pedestrian and the vehicular areas is that the vehicular is very strongly defined. The pedestrian is not so well-defined.
Now, the pedestrian are along Raymond Road you're referring to, or as they're coming in from the south?
The, so if I'm parked, if I'm parked on the east side?
If you park on the east side in San Luis, we have the side entrance, which is next to the patio and that is near the landscaping, so it'll be very visible. The entry doors have cover canopy. They will be visible for the customer to park and know where the side entrance is.
Right, but they will have to cross the driveway and the stacking car lanes as well?
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay.
Unfortunately, with this layout, to obtain a better view from the intersections and have all this landscaping and for better placement of the building and the drive-thru and not have all the drive-thru queuing line flow out, you know, we had to do a center design and so therefore, all the customer parking is outside and they have to walk through the drive-thru.
Okay, in the parking requirements, I believe there was six more spaces than the required parking spaces than zoning regulation. The over-parking, did you consider using some of the over-parking for additional landscaping to soften the site and also to reward the pedestrians?
And if I could have our civil engineer join this conversation and have more, he could be, he'll be able to better answer this question?
That's John Pollak.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Commissioner Song, if you'd like, we can have him join via phone, but we'll need to take a couple of minutes to get him on the line.
Okay, I, I'll pass to the next commissioner's questions. Are there other questions? Hold on one second. Are there other questions for the applicant, Commissioner Hershburn?
So just to clarify, in order to partake of the drive-thru, does a car have to circumnavigate the building twice to exit?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And my other question is, maybe I'm not seeing the right page, but I, oh, yeah, maybe, I don't see the right page. I don't see the awning for the drive-thru. Is that represented anywhere?
The what, I'm sorry?
Didn't you say there was an awning or overhead elements for the drive-thru where the order taker would stand?
Yes.
I don't see that represented anywhere in the drawings.
So the canopy would be covering the vehicle?
But do you see that? Can you show me where that is in the drawings? I don't see that represented anywhere.
There's a slide showing on the screen, and it'll show you where the canopy is, it extended right there.
Okay. And you do realize, we've had temperatures over a hundred and twenty degrees here lately. Do you expect your order taker to stand out even though it's in shade when it's over a hundred and twenty degrees?
We alternate the shifts, and so the wonderful thing about...
You do what?
We alternate the shifts, so they can stay out there and take orders an hour at a time, so they'll...
So over a hundred and twenty degrees, you expect somebody to stand out there for over an hour?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's why we're adding the fans and misters.
Are there other questions, Commissioner Lewin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the only question I have for the applicant is, if maybe with the help of staff, could somebody just show me how a car enters, orders, and picks up? I don't quite understand the double loop of the building process, and I just want to be able to visualize it.
Okay, so Commissioner Lewin...
And if you could also reference somewhere in our packet where we can follow along as you do this, right? The image on the screen is so tiny, I can't see it very well.
Right, so we're looking at...
You can go into a gallery view and be able to see it better.
Gallery view, gallery view.
On your upper right-hand side, there's something called speaker view, and it will let you go into a gallery and you can go on the drawing and then pin the video.
Right, so Commissioner...
And that will make it larger.
Commissioner Maruzzi, if you want to look at the paper, eleven by seventeen, it is LD 1.0, which is the landscape plan. So there are, the main driveway, which is existing from the large field of parking at Walmart, is right here, so you'd come from the intersection of...
Glenn, can I interrupt for a second? Do you have a smaller pointer so that it, we can actually follow your pointer? The way that your pointer comes off in the screen, it's a big halo.
Unfortunately, we can't. That's the only pointer that we have available that works with this technology.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
If you enter the site, you'll come in from San Luis Rey. It'll come, you'll come in, make a right turn in, I'm sorry, left turn in. There's a driveway entrance here. To place an order, you'd come around the building. The double queue lanes are here. Their staff would stand and take orders, or you would order under the canopy, pay and pick up, go around the building again, and then exit the driveway.
I've got to admit, I've never seen anything like that. I understand the double stacking, and I'm saying this to the applicant to help me out. I understand the double stacking because I've seen many fast-food, quick-service restaurants where the cars stack way out into the other parking lots. They block lanes of traffic. And could you help me just understand why people have to go through twice in order to order and then pick up? Yes, please.
Fortunately, for this intersection, facing the building, you know, facing the front of the building and the patio to the intersection, we, you know, were forced to put the double drive-thru on the other side. Can you hear me, Will?
I can understand.
You're breaking up.
I hear echo, I'm sorry.
May I make an effort at this? Glenn, can you go back to the site plan that showed the original proposal by us?
Right, so in this plan, the AAC reviewed, it had double stacking also, but the building was flipped, so you would enter here, double-stack around, pay an order, and then exit. So there was not the loop around. But this scheme has the front of the building facing the parking lot and not the public street. So the back of the house is what you would see with the trash enclosure here if you were driving down Ramon Road or San Luis Rey. So the AAC and staff felt that by flipping the building, we end up with the scheme of driving, looping around the building.
Yeah, and if I could say, the patio, they wanted the patio to be on the northwest side of the building, so it had a view of the mountains. So with those changes, moving the building back, flipping the building entirely, it created this need to have a double trip around the building.
And so, two more questions for you, Mr. Rothbart and Ms. Wolf. One, clearly, you feel that you can operate your restaurant in this fashion, right? You wouldn't have brought this forward, okay. And then, the other question I have is, if it's not a busy time, a person may just drive up and complete their first circle, make their order, and pick up their food in short order and leave the entire process. Is that correct?
Yes. On peak times, we would close the second drive-thru.
Okay, thank you. That's helped me understand a lot of what you're doing here. I appreciate it.
And by the way, the very first question we asked them is, you know, how comfortable are you with this double-drive-through scheme? And they had indicated they'd studied it extensively, and they were very comfortable.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I yield my time.
Are there other questions? Commissioner Irvin?
I'm just curious, if the building will be open to 3:00 AM, are you guys going to have someone outside at 2:00 or 3:00 AM standing out there taking orders? And if so, do you guys plan on having security? Or is the lighting sufficient enough for those people to be standing outside late at night?
Well, first of all, we have cameras throughout the building. We have six to ten cameras all around the building for safety. Two, we don't allow our crew members to be out there after dark, so no, so there will be a single drive-thru lane at that time. The busiest times is during the day, and so crew members will be out there when it's daylight. But at night, after dark, we don't even allow them to take the trash after sunset for security purposes.
Okay.
Other questions? I have two, one for Mr. Rothbart. Who will be, would you be maintaining the landscaping?
Yes, as we have for the last fifteen years.
Okay. And one is a question about Starbucks. The, I like the architecture in the Starbucks building. The back that faces Ramon looks very blank to me. And I was wondering if, just have you considered the treatment of the back of that building with Starbucks?
Have we...
When I looked at the slide, it's got, the Raising Cane Building has glass and other things that are attractive on Ramon, but the back of Starbucks looks...
Well, it's hard to put glass because of the inner workings of the Starbucks and where they have to have their facilities, their bathrooms. We've studied it extensively. We thought we did design the back of the store. We thought it looked nice, but we do have the architect, my architect here, if you'd like to chat with him about what those priorities are, I'd be happy to have him respond.
Okay. I probably, I probably would. And then, the other question is, one about the flipping of the building. I can understand why AAC was interested in doing it, but it made the traffic pattern. It appeared to make it fairly difficult. It also looked like it required taking out much more of your mature landscaping. Is that correct?
Not sure. The, I have my landscape architect here. It's going to be a close call whether or not it had to come out with either footprint. But we are replacing, and we are relocating them back to the same location space. If you look at the images that we had prepared, those four prominent palm trees, full-grown, end up back at the corner, so. But I can ask, you can ask Robert Hurley if you wouldn't mind.
And it's, one of the questions is, is it possible to leave the landscaping, the mature landscaping that's being taken out at that corner, to leave it in under any of the renditions? The landscaping that's being removed?
Okay.
That just feels like a loss to me.
But it, as you'll find out, I mean, properly maintained, and I hope you do appreciate that, based upon the way it looks, we have been properly maintaining it. I mean, the landscaping in that sense... I mean, the landscaping in that center is stunning. We think actually now this is a great opportunity that we can go in and massage the portions of it that, that maybe we didn't think about initially. And by adding 39 new trees, it really does give us an opportunity to do something special, especially out in front of the Starbucks. And properly maintain, these things grow so quickly. But let me get Robert Curly first, and then Brian Pollak Quinn to talk about the architecture. Glenn, can you do that for us?
Madam Chair, if you'll give me just a moment, I'll.
The engineer for Maria's question.
Madam Chair, do you want me to call the landscape architect?
I think we were first calling the engineer for Commissioner Song's question.
Let's see, so just to verify with Mr. Rothbart, John Pollack is the individual we're calling?
Yes.
Okay.
And he's the engineer?
Yes, he is.
Good.
Ms. Warmick, I would also like to mention the Del Taco building that they have there currently does not face Ramon. The entrance is facing the Walmart Plaza. It's not facing the Ramon. So I know the, a lot of people have been speaking about the facing of the entrance of the property. But the Del Taco that's next door faces inside, not towards Ramon.
And, and to Commissioner Irvin's point, if you look across the street at the Springs, all of those restaurants are inward-facing also. There's none that face the public right-of-way there, either Jean Autry or Ramon.
Madam Chair, Mr. Pollack is not answering his phone. I will now call Mr. Curly, who is the landscape architect.
Thank you. John Poll, John Pollack is on. Can you hear me?
Yeah, okay.
Hello?
Yes, yes, I'm in on the Zoom.
You had questions?
I think. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So for Raising Cane, there are 31 spaces required and 37 are provided. And for Starbucks, 17 spaces are required and 30 spaces are provided. On your site design, how did you, what made you decide to provide more stalls than were required? And how did that affect your site design?
Sure. I mean, I think it was simply just the opportunity to provide additional parking for customers and also for, for the, for the tenants. There's no specific reason that we were doing it for operational stamp or anything like that. We are increasing the total landscaping from the existing office depot condition, about 2,600 square feet. So we were showing an increase in landscaping already, so it was just an effort to maximize the parking. You know, I, if, if we want to reduce the parking and add more landscaping a person, from the, from the site design side, I don't see an issue. I mean, that would be a question for, for Stan, maybe as the owner, or for, for the tenants if they're okay with reduced parking counts. But from my perspective, that is not an issue.
Okay, and since I have you on the phone, could I also ask, the, what, how wide is that landscape area between the outdoor eating and the drive-through stacking lane?
The, there is no buffer directly adjacent from, are you talking about from the patio to the, to the, to the inside drive-through lane?
Yes.
There's a, it's, I think it's a two or three-foot buffer between the, between the edge of the patio and the, the drive-through lane.
Okay, thank you.
And then Commissioner Song, if I, I can also answer your question about the queuing, if I may. The, we, we've studied other Raising Cane sites, most of them being single lane because the dual lane hadn't been open yet. The, the average queue we were seeing across three restaurants that had been open for a little bit of time was about 15 with a peak 15-minute queue of about 17. And that was for single lane, less efficient drive-through operations. So this one allows us 21 before it spills out into, into the, to the circulation traffic. So we feel it provides more than enough queue. And, and we tried to design it so that there was a 20-foot, a 24-foot wide dual one-way so that in the instance that it did spill out, you know, queuing is able to, to stack on one side of the one-way and there's still, there's still circulation availability around the site, you know, even if the queue did spill out. So that was the intent of the wide, 24-foot wide dual, dual one-way lanes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions? Thank you very much, and if we could get the landscape architect on the phone?
And the architect.
And the architect.
Are you enjoying Zoom meetings?
We prefer to be in person.
Yeah, they're very challenging.
Unfortunately, I, I don't have an access code for the architect's direct line. Who was the next, Mr. Rothbart, who was the next person you wanted to call?
Robert Curly.
Yeah, I just tried him. It requires an extension, and I don't have that.
It's 112. Sorry.
Mr. Rothbart, we'd much rather see you in person.
Yeah, me too.
But this, this is the first time we've gotten to see the applicants on Zoom, and it's, that makes it much better.
It really does. I mean, there's, there really is something about the human exchange that, that is of value. I wear jackets for you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have Mr. Curly on the line, the landscape architect.
Mr. Curly?
Good evening.
Is, is he on the line or is he on Zoom?
He's on the phone line.
Okay. I know I have a question for him. Do other people have a question as well? Commissioner Hirschhorn, did you? Mr. Curly, my questions had to do with the two different plans for, one, one was the suggestion to us from AAC, and the other was your original plan. In, in the original plan, it looked to me like you had a broader landscape buffer on Ramon.
Mr. Curly, did you hear the question?
I, I, I don't think, I don't think I understand the question. I'm trying to follow what plan you're referring to by.
I'm looking at the two plans. I'm looking at your original submission, and then I'm looking at the landscape plan with the revised drawings from the suggestions from AAC. I have two concerns about it. It seems like the traffic pattern is more difficult under the revised drawings. But it also looked to me like the landscape buffer on Ramon, that you were taking out more trees on that buffer on Ramon with the revisions that the AAC wanted you to do. And I was wondering what the width of the landscape buffer, specifically between the building and, or the turnstile and Ramon on the two plans.
You caught me. It'll take me a minute to get that for you, just a second. I have to open up, I'll tell you on the existing. Between Ramon and the build, Ramon and the block wall, let's use that, at the narrowest, it's about five feet on the existing, or on the newest plan, the suggestion plan. And at the widest, it's 17 feet on the prior plan.
Along the street between the, the wall that you're putting in, the half-wall and the, and the drive-through lane.
Correct. That's what I gave you. On Ramon, it's five feet minimum, 15 foot. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. I've got it. And on the original plan, it was.
I'm giving that to you, just a second. At the narrowest, five feet. I believe they're pretty much the same. Ah, hang on. To the wall, 17 feet at the widest on Ramon. It's pretty much the same from the two schemes, both on Ramon and San Luis Rey. All, all, all that really happened was the building flipped over and shifted east, taking the parking that was in the middle, dividing the parking between Starbucks and Raising Cane's and pushing that parking to San Luis Rey. So what it actually does is push the building further away, which gives it a, a deeper sense of, of setback from, from the street.
Madam Chair, I, I'm looking at the landscape plan that, for the first layout, and they look pretty similar. In fact, the new plan looks like there's more landscaping on Ramon. I'm happy to share that with you.
And, and on the landscaping plan on Ramon, is there a possibility of keeping more, and I know you're adding landscape around it, but keeping more of the mature landscape in any version?
Well, when you build the wall and do the grading, and, and even during the construction phase, it'd be very difficult to keep that material alive, healthy, and looking good. So I would say no, but we're replacing it with what's there now and additional species to better enhance the experience along Ramon and San Luis Rey. And we're moving the palms that are there now closer, that, that are closer to the existing building. We're actually picking those up and moving them closer to the street.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions for the landscape architect?
We just spoke to the Starbucks architect. He's, he's available now, I think, if you would try him again.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, did you want the architect for Starbucks?
Yes, yes, that would be good. Just, if you know, anybody knows what page the, it shows the Ramon facade.
Chair, it's towards the back of the package. It is next to the last sheet.
Madam Chair, I have the architect for Starbucks on the line. If you'd like to go ahead and begin your questions for him.
Yeah, and I have, I have a very simple question. The architect's name is Mr. Hello? If I can address you by your name? Yeah, I can.
Can, can you hear me?
Lovely.
Hello?
Brian?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Yes.
If you could turn down the volume on the TV or the internet in the background?
Okay, I'm, I'm turning that down. Sorry, my, somebody came in the house and my dogs went nuts. So, anyway. Go ahead.
See, I love your architect for most of the building. When I look at the, the facade that faces Ramon, it just feels very blank to me.
Well, we actually have, the sloped element actually is like a frame. It has a recess, the green band that runs through, that also recesses. The panels below that, that are the pale yellow, also recess. And then, of course, you have the large, the wood tile feature element, which was, which is actually the drive-through window. And then also you have another element, which is, I'm looking at one of the elevations I have in front of me, which is the, the entry kind of wraps around. The stone or the, the wood element, which is a tile, wraps around also. So actually, there are a lot of things going on here, except that unfortunately, with the way Starbucks lays out, you have to have your counter, you have to have all of your barista stations, all your equipment that runs along one side of the building. And then obviously, if you look at the other side of the building that's facing in, we do have a lot of windows, glazing, and then obviously you get to the entry. We have the entry element with the tilted awning. And we kind of mimic that awning also over the drive-through element, which also stands out from the building. We have also the wood accent pillars on that elevation, which also go have a little bit of recess around them. They have sconce lights on that elevation. So actually, there's quite a few little details on that elevation that make it interesting. We weren't trying to make this building overly complex. We were trying to keep simple form. I was looking at a lot of the old mid-century modern architecture of Palm Springs, which Palm Springs was a hotbed of that. And so that's why we did the tilted building, which we looked at the shape as being the most important factor in the building, is, is creating this interesting shape as opposed to all the buildings that are more rectilinear along the street. And, and then, of course, it has some hints of Starbucks by the use of color. But there is a fair amount of detail here. There is, the recesses low, there's the element across the top, the gray trim, then the drive-through element, which is close to the middle of the building, and then also the entry element, which wraps around. And of course, I'm using my hands and you can't see me, so I can't see how expressive I can get about these things. But anyway. And then, of course, there is some layering here. We have the, the wall in front with landscape in front of it. So I do think there's quite a bit going on here other than having windows or other than taking those lower recess elements and maybe changing the color of them. There's also reveals in the other element that mimic the, we have the tile vertical elements, which also help to break up this elevation. And then we have reveals on the, in the stucco that also will create more definition. So there is quite a bit going on, and by the time you have the landscape in front of that, the low wall in front of that, it, it's, there's a fair amount going on.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Starbucks architect, Commissioner Song? You're on mute. Okay.
Could, so, based on the director's comment, the chair's comments, could I elaborate just a little bit more on where the, where the order is, sort of the tower where the order is picked up? That seems to be like the only flat parapet element. And what we like, what I like about the design is that it has this unique geometry at the entrance. And so perhaps if that parapet could be sloped, so it's not, it's not this blunt, you know, flat parapet. And if you make that just slightly wider, then the proportions on that exterior elevation now become such that that window stop has more hierarchy. And the other thing is that the pilasters that you're creating in the south elevation, they are a little bit wider, and I think they have more straights. they are a little bit wider, and I think they have more strength than, you know, a foot less wide than that in the back, which makes it a little more slender and a little more weak in proportion. I think those kind of finessings would really not change that much, but actually give more importance to the pickup window. Would you be amenable to those?
I couldn't hear it. It's a little choppy to hear. Could you repeat the items that you were discussing?
Sure. Okay, so the pilaster width that you see on the south elevation is wider than the pilasters on the north elevation? That's one. Second is that you have this moving roof line on the south elevation. And then on the north elevation, where you have the pickup window, you have this flat parapet line.
At the pickup, at the pickup massing, the pickup window has the mass, and that is straight. And that's done to emphasize that element. And also break the elevation up, because we recognize that there aren't as many elements on that elevation. We don't have windows on that side.
Right, but if you made that just a foot or 18 inches wider on each side, it will give more hierarchy to that pickup tower, to the backdrop of your exterior facade.
Okay. And that's, I mean, I would have to discuss that with ownership. But I understand that.
No, I think even those few elements would give better proportion to the north elevation and balance out more the nice composition that you created on the south elevation.
See, I think the balance on the south elevation is nice. I mean, add 18 inches on either side, it becomes more square and blocky. You can't see the verticality.
Yeah, because we are using vertical elements. So it's kind of a set of verticals. So if it, I don't know. I think, you know, that it, I mean, that center element is fairly large. To me, that's just my own feel. And I mean, that's the way we designed it. We thought that it didn't need to be any wider. Otherwise, it started to take away from the pitch roof line. It starts to be more dominant. We don't want it to be overly dominant. It is part of the pickup window. It's part of the detail of the building. But we're just trying to balance the elements, so.
Madam Chair, are there any additional questions for the architect?
If there are any additional questions from the commission, I think with that, are there any questions for any of the parties? There being none, the matter is before the commission. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Commissioner Marutse.
So Commissioner Song, was your concern about the traffic movement more about pedestrian safety crossing those paths to get to the building?
Yes. There's no demarcation either through pavers or a different surface finish. If there's 25 cars being stacked, and I'm sure they're, you know, want to get out after they pick up their food, and if there's people crossing. And the second part of that is that the idea of bringing more landscape, it softens the speed of how people navigate through the site. And right across the driveway, there's a sea of parking for Walmart. And if you see it, it's only 25%, 30% occupied. So more heat island effect, I think should not be encouraged in the desert.
If you look at the original plan, did that plan address most of your concerns? Other than the fact that you could put in some sort of pavers or something that would help in the second plan?
What page is the original plan on?
The original plan was not included in the packet. It was shown on the slides. And we can pull that up if you want to see it.
I guess what I'm driving at in some sense is the AAC essentially had to move the building, and the result was this traffic pattern. So it's a little bit difficult to understand who, which entity has the right approach. I'm confused, whether it's the AAC or it's us.
So in the slide that's before you right now, this is, you know, shows more landscaping between the building and the double stack. This was a very, very, very first plan, which only shows the one drive-through lane.
Just can I speak to that for a second before we go through? I think in the future, when we do something like this, this is a suggestion from the AAC. It's not firm. It was a study session. And we should have seen both approaches so that we can take a look at it. Commissioner Hirschhorn.
Can I comment now, or is it? Okay. I'm not sure the AAC did this project any favors. I know the objective they were trying to get to, but I think it caused more problems than it solved. And I, it's unfortunate, because the applicant went through a lot of work to address those comments. And I feel badly about that. But I don't think having somebody drive twice around the building to pick up some chicken nuggets is the right thing to do. It's just, if I got towards the, if I was at the bottom on the south side of the building and I had just picked up my chicken nuggets, I'd be like wanting to leave. I wouldn't want to circle around again. And I don't know what kind of problems that. It would be very frustrating to have to drive around that building twice when there's 30 or 40 other cars trying to do the same thing. So that's a problem for me. But on a more fundamental level, and I don't really want to solve the problem for them, because trying to solve the problem, I think, led to more problems. But there's some very lovely, mature landscaping along San Luis Rey and along Ramon that's being removed. And yes, they're replacing trees, but they're replacing baby trees with mature, or the other way around, replacing mature trees with baby trees. And this thing essentially is sitting in a sea of asphalt. And all we're asking is a few feet of buffer of landscape to remain on the perimeter. And it doesn't compensate enough to put in new trees. I think, I would need to see the mature landscaping along Ramon and San Luis Rey kept in place. And can you put those photos up that were not included in the packet plan? Okay, so, wait, wait, go back, go back. Yeah, that tree, that great big beautiful tree to the left of the white truck is gone. It's barely at the curb line. So to say there's not enough room to protect that tree says that there's some adjustment that needs to be made. Go to the next slide, please. That row of trees to the left of the stoplight pole, the one that hangs out over Ramon, there's probably one, two, three, four, five mature trees there. Now, these trees have been in the ground probably since 2015 or 2016. So they're at least 10 to 15 years old. So this is what it looked like after 15 years. And I don't think we need to wait that long to get our mature landscaping from the new trees, because they're right there. There was another photograph. Yeah, so there's a row of trees going down San Luis Rey. And again, we're losing those beautiful, mature trees. And with this relatively small building on this relatively large plot of land, it seems to me that they could save these trees that are hugging the perimeter of the site. The other thing I'd like to ask the commission to consider, could you go back to that plan that shows the trees to be removed? Not there, not back there. Okay, you can't blow that up by any chance, can you?
You can go to the right hand of your screen.
Well, I was trying to, I've studied it, but I was hoping for the commission. Anyway, so the red diamonds that are within the parking lot, you know, were overparked anyway. So I would also want to see where possible, the trees that are within parking spaces saved, because you're going to lose, I don't know, two, three, four, a half a dozen parking spaces. But you're way overparked. And as Commissioner Song pointed out, there's almost an infinite amount of parking spaces just across the drive aisle to the south. So they're not going to be hurting for parking. And they're ripping out some of this other mature tree cover to add, I don't know, four, six spaces, which again, doesn't, to me, it bespeaks a lack of sensitivity to this mature landscaping. And we don't have a lot of mature shade-giving trees in Palm Springs. We've got a lot of palm trees. I get that. We've got a lot of palm trees. But we don't have a lot of mature shade-giving trees in Palm Springs. And to lose them here, I think unnecessarily, would prevent me from approving this plan. So those are my comments.
Other comments? If there aren't other comments, I wanted to, oh, sorry, Commissioner Urban.
Just to piggyback off of what Michael said, also that shading there, that location is quite heavily trafficked with the sun bus. There is quite a bit of people that are out there on a regular basis. That's a very, like, active bus stop there. So you can see people lined up along the street there, ducking inside of the trees for shade on a regular basis constantly. So, you know, that shade also helps out the pedestrians too with the bus stop.
I just wanted to comment that I agreed with Commissioner Hirschhorn, that I think we were not well-served by the changes AAC made for the circulation plan. For, I think the Starbucks is fine. I do think we want to lose some parking there. But for the first property, I think we weren't well-served. And I like the original circulation plan better. I don't know that we need the second row of parking in that. I think we could push it further back, but keep the simpler circulation, the original circulation plan, given that everything else in the shopping centers are inward-facing rather than outward-facing.
Madam Chair, if I could just comment briefly. Because we've had a couple of comments about reverting back to the original circulation plan, one of the things that I think is important for the planning commission to understand is in reverting back to the original circulation plan, that also flips the building so that the primary entrance and dining area is on the south side, and the back of the building is facing Ramon. So there are trade-offs in the circulation plan and the direction that the building faces. I just wanted you all to be aware of that.
Wouldn't the patio face east if it flipped?
No, it would be on the south side.
Commissioner Loewen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to point out that I think that this property owner has demonstrated is one of the best in terms of maintaining their parking lot trees, their urban forest. I see many, many neglected shopping centers, and this is one of the best. So I share the sadness at the loss of some of these trees. But I feel almost that this property owner is being penalized because they did such a great job at cultivating their trees. And he's promising to replant almost two-for-one, the ones that are removed. And species like palaverde do grow very, very rapidly in acacia. So I just want to share that I'm not, I normally love trees. And in this case, due to the demolition of a large building and all this reconstruction, I understand the need for the majority of their decisions personally. I am more concerned about the multiple circular, I just have a hard time understanding if it's proper for us. I would love to see a better, better way to understand how people will park their cars and traverse what is actually three lanes of traffic if they want to dine in the restaurant. And for me, that's kind of the biggest piece of it, is how are people going to do that successfully? And was the restaurant owner kind of forced into this to meet the AAC's requirements? I like the idea of the dining being on the north side, because that gets less solar radiation. So I think that's a nice feature, to be honest, rather than southern dining, which is going to have sun all year long. And then, I don't know where we're going to go with this, because we don't really have the original plan to say that we would approve. And I'll look to other people for advice. But if we're going to make, if we're going to recommend really wholesale changes to this plot, then I really like Commissioner Urban's point that shade trees along the sidewalk are very important. And then if we're going to really redesign this or ask for a major redesign, there may be a way to provide better pedestrian amenities on the outside of that shell there for the people at the parking lot as well. So I know that was a lot of different thoughts for each of you, but I guess I wanted to share each of those ideas and hear where everyone else is going. And I think Starbucks is totally fine.
Commissioner Marutse.
I'm just wondering about some various options. Is there an option where a subcommittee of the planning commission could meet with a subcommittee of the AAC and the applicant and staff and try to work some of this out? I don't feel comfortable making these decisions. I don't feel qualified. And I'd have to rely on everyone else in terms of the circulation issue and how it relates to the original plan. So I mean, I'm looking for some ideas as to how we could resolve this.
I don't think we can resolve it tonight. That would be my feeling on it. I think we could make recommendations, but I don't know that I could vote for this tonight with the circulation element that it has. I could vote on the Starbucks, the lot split. I have no problems with the Starbucks property. With this one and with the circulation, I don't think it works. I do agree with Commissioner Song that we'd like to see the parking reduced and there be more landscape or more dining space. Given COVID, I think people... Given COVID, I think if they're gonna be eating, they're gonna be eating, sitting outside more than they're gonna be eating, sitting inside for quite a while. Um, but I'm- I guess for me, if I have to vote on it with the circulation it currently has, I would have to vote no.
Madam Chair, if I might suggest, I think Commissioner Maruzzi's suggestion is a good one, that maybe the best way to resolve the issue is to establish a subcommittee of the Planning Commission and the AAC. Uh, that way you can understand the concerns of the AAC as well as those voiced by the Planning Commission this evening. Um, I agree that you, uh, seem to be in concurrence on the Starbucks. Uh, that can be approved and moved forward through the process. Uh, but what we might do is have a subcommittee of Planning Commission and AAC resolve the circulation issue with the raising canes. Uh, and then that way it can go forward after the subcommittee has resolved the issue.
I, um, for the director, the concern I have is that in some sense, the experiment of it going to AAC with suggestions and then it was gonna go back, I think has not entirely worked in this instance. Um, we could do it as a subcommittee with the suggestion that we're not comfortable with- with what they've done and what it does to the circulation. I- I don't want to just send it back to the AAC and say, "Let's talk." I think we have to say that we're not comfortable with the way they've changed circulation element and, uh, there's- there's several things that, like, I would make the motion for Starbucks, but I would want Maria to suggest how many, um, parking spaces should be lost in the Starbucks property. And for the raising cane, I would say that we're not comfortable with the circulate- circulation element. Um, and if that involves flipping the building back to solve it, I think that's something that we need to do. And we would like to maintain more of a buffer along Ramon for, um, the pedestrians near the bus stop. And that we want better circulation. And we probably want to look a bit at the articulation of the back of- if the building's gonna face, I guess Starbucks the only thing would be whether we want AAC to look at the articulation on the back of the building. So should we take them separately and do Starbucks first?
Yes, I think that would be appropriate.
So in terms of Starbucks, Commissioner Hirschbein, uh, let me see if we can frame this first. Commissioner Song, you had some recog- recommendations on Starbucks? If we approve this?
Yes, the recommendation would be to eliminate parking spaces close to the driveway intersections. So when people are turning right or left, I'm sorry, when people are turning right, there's not a car right at the intersection backing up to them. So I'm looking at about six spaces spread out.
And did you want to make any suggestions on the rear of the building? Or are you comfortable with that?
Um, my- my suggestion would be to actually increase the number of trees on that landscape by two so that it screens the, uh, the building, uh, parapet. It doesn't screen it, but it, you know, it further composes with layering.
Okay, so that- and that- is that a motion?
Um.
Uh, before Comis- I'll get to you, Commissioner Hirschbein. I'm just asking if that's a motion.
Yes, that's my motion.
Okay. Commissioner Hirschbein, you want to comment? So you may want to make some changes to that and maybe you want to second it with what your concerns are.
Yeah, and it- and I'm on board with everything Commissioner Song said. But, um, again, Glenn, can you go back to the plan that shows the trees being removed? Because I believe if we eliminate a couple of parking spaces, we could save, um, some of the mature trees in the parking lot as well i- in Starbucks.
I see at least three, four.
Do you want to identify them?
Um, I can't- yeah, okay. So I think there's- there's probably three there, right, Maria? Or four?
There's three, uh, I'm sorry. There's three at the parking bay and one at the, um, it's kind of confusing.
And Glenn, could you perhaps just put your pointer so we can make sure we know which ones they are?
The three clo- okay. Michael, do you want to take it or do you?
Well, yeah, go back to that slide, Glenn.
Is this the slide you're?
May.
It looks like there's three that are closer to the building, uh, that are being removed. And I don't know how many parking spaces you'd have to give up for that. It's not really plotted out that carefully that I can tell. And then there's one on the perimeter, uh, facing the drive aisle, uh, in the, uh, uh, east-west, uh, direction, di- down to the sou- uh, down to the south. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so the, uh, in the east-west direction, they can take the two or three spaces out in order to keep that tree there and also have landscape stacking room without having a car backing into that driveway.
Yeah, I don't know exactly where it is. But anyway, maybe staff can work with the applicant because I- I- it's hard to- it's hard for me to see that right now on that slide.
But what you want to do is add three more trees to the back to soften the back of the building, right?
No, I want to retain- no, no. I want to- I want to retain three or four trees in the south parking area.
And if Glenn pointed to them?
Yeah.
It's three trees that are together right there, right?
Yes, and then one, uh, further south on the other side of the parking lot.
Can Glenn point to that?
Yeah.
That one, okay. And Maria had wanted three trees in the back on Ramon to soften.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so that's the motion and removing at least six parking spaces, correct?
I- I believe that's the case.
Okay. Commissioner Lewin, do you want to speak to this?
Uh, yes, before we vote, I just, a- a little clarification. If we vote to approve the Starbucks with the modifications made by the two motion makers, uh, we're- we're- we're creating a lot split as well, right? We're- we're recognizing that. And I- I guess the thing that occurs to me is what happens when we try and solve the problems on the neighboring lots, which will have the, um, chicken restaurant? And what if- what if we need to do something that's currently on the Starbucks lot and we've already approved that in its final? For example, to me, the- the ingress egress point, if you look at LD 1.0, the way you get into these two properties seems like such a narrow entry, especially with three lanes of traffic for the chicken restaurant and two lanes for Starbucks. And it's an extremely narrow entryway. What if we need to take space to separate them? Or what if the right answer is to put an island in between these two lots to help separate the- the traffic? And will we be tying our hands by voting on Starbucks today?
Madam Chair, I can address that question if you will. Let me go ahead. Because staff has reviewed the previous plan as well as this proposed plan, taking action on Starbucks this evening will not impact the ultimate decision of changes to the Raising Cane's property. Also, keep in mind that both of these items go back to the AAC for finalization. And we can address any modifications that would need to be done at that point in time. Uh, so again, staff is comfortable based on your motion and based on the previous plans that we've seen, uh, that the driveway opening will work.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That's my only question.
Okay, so if we're looking at Starbucks, a motion and a second, uh, can we call the roll on that? Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewin?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Vice Chair Maruzzi? Chair Lewin, Graham, sorry.
Okay, now we're on the other side of the property. And, um, with Raising Cane, and I think we- we do want to send it back to a sub- do we want a subcommittee or do we, uh, maybe a subcommittee to deal with this? Um, with, uh, let's try and think, with the suggestion that we think this project was ill-served by flipping the building, uh, in terms of the impact on the drivelanes and that we have a concern about the sea of concrete that it creates and- and the drivelanes. Um, and we'd like to save more of the mature trees. I think those are, probably lose some of the parking. Uh, but those appear to be the concerns that I've heard about this. Uh, I'm a little concerned about the people standing outside for an hour in 122-degree heat, taking orders to the- I would assume there'd be rapid turnover in staff in summertime.
So Chair, what I have written down here that you had mentioned for Raising Cane is that you'd like to save the mature landscaping along Ramon Road, reduce parking, increase the outside patio, uh, space, and then the, uh, re-view the circulation.
That's correct, but review the circulation because we don't think the three drivelanes work. So we want to review the circulation and possibly and move- and consider moving it back to, uh, the previous building. Commissioner Lewin?
Uh, I just would like to voice support for Vice Chair Maruzzi's suggestion of a subcommittee of this commission and the AAC and the- and the applicant to try and really ha- it sounds like two divergent ideas have been proposed and nobody really knows much about the first. I like- I like that idea. I- I don't think I'm qualified to sit on that, but I would love to make the motion that we establish a subcommittee to resolve all the issues that you raised and come- and come back.
Do we want more direction than that? This is really our job to figure out the entitlements. It's AAC's to work through the details. So I don't want to- I don't want to aggregate our role in this?
I mean, I definitely would give some direction as in account for pedestrian safety as well as, um, extensive look at outdoor cooling for the employees that are- are standing in the drivelanes. And for the subcommittee to determine whether the three lanes is appropriate or- or whether there's a d- different pattern that's more appropriate.
And what about the placement of the building?
I think that will come out of the idea of what the right traffic flow will be, right? That is what created this? I- I don't know the answer to that. I'm sorry, Madam Chair. That's why I nominate a subcommittee of hopefully architects.
Commissioner Maruzzi?
In terms of the subcommittee, I- I believe that the planning commissioners do have more authority than the AAC. It, you know, the idea isn't that they're all equals. Um, some are more equal than others. And that the planning commissioners, you know, can discuss with the AAC members their thoughts, concerns. But ultimately, it's the planning commissioners that should have the greater weight in terms of how this ultimately is presented to us again, in my opinion. Because the AAC serves at the pleasure, is that- if that's the right phrase, of the planning commission.
Yeah, I think, I mean, clearly, our subcommittee that we designate would come back with- with the intent of resolving the issues that we've discussed today, right? It's not- it's not that it's a multiple jurisdiction issue. It's a try and resolve it and come back with a plan that- that the six of us can support.
I- are there other comments? I- I agree with Commissioner Maruzzi in terms of the orientation of roles in this. Um, I do think sitting down and looking at it would be good. I'm just- I'm just concerned that we ended up with a worse circulation pattern.
So in terms of the subcommittee, I- I agree with Commissioner Maruzzi that I think one is warranted. And it could just be planning commission members. And I would, um, suggest that the applicant do no more work on this. But if there's, uh, for instance, if Maria and I sat down with the architect, the engineer, the applicant, and the landscape architect, well, I don't mean sit down with because we know we can't do that unfortunately, but zoomed with the- that group and we could, um, maybe iron out some of the specificity that we've been talking about. And that would allow them to get to, um, uh, a plan that they could then submit to- to the full commission. But again, ma- maybe you don't take it to the degree of completion that you have with this package, you know, in light of what's happened unfortunately, um, uh, to save them some- some money. Uh, I- I- I think- I think that would be, uh, could be a- a way forward.
I- I agree with that. And I would like- Maria, are you willing to work on that?
Yeah, I- I do want- I want to enforce two things is that i- is there merit on the subcommittee of the planning commission to review a little more in-depth the first design that was brought in? Uh, because we all seen it for the first time tonight. Um, you know, does that help the applicant? Or does the applicant come back with a site plan sketch, you know, that has a better circulation? Because we-
Well, that's one option. But I- I just don't want them doing a full presentation like this again unless-
The site plan sketch.
Yeah.
Site plan sketch, right, of the revised circulation that works, um, where the customer doesn't have to go around twice.
Where it works best for them, works best for the pedestrian, uh, taking into account that there are back-of-house or the- the rear facade of some of these freestanding fast-food restaurants do face the public right of way. We- we've established that. Um, so if you- if you want to suggest that, that's okay. I was thinking maybe they didn't want to, but that's- I- I would- that's fine.
So if there's a subcommittee that includes the two of you, uh, is there someone else? Commissioner Maruzzi, would you like to be on that?
No, I would recommend that you be on it, actually, because you have stronger opinions about it than I do. I'm serious. I mean, I- I'm more confused about, uh, these are technical issues that I'm not qualified to- to answer. And I'd rather hear from the architects that are experts in this. So I don't want to be on that committee.
Commissioner Irvin, comment?
Yeah, I- I, yeah, I just have a question. Um, it's- it's not a- as big as the issue that we have. But I- did you- were you able to get satisfied with the question of the 3:00 AM closing that you wanted? Because I know you're ready for the 3:00 AM.
No, I'm okay with that. I- I actually did not realize that our fast-food restaurants were open all night. And there may be reason to have late-night food pickup for people who work second or third shift.
Um, I- I have one minor comment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the- on the report, it talks about that the parapet will be lit with red lights on linear-
On the report, it talks about that the parrot will be littering with red lights, a linear red light. I would like to make a suggestion that that design should be part of the signage design and be presented as the signage design and not approved it as part of the architectural. Even though...
Thinking about that with the Starbucks as well?
Yes.
For the planning director, can we modify that motion?
Yes, you can.
Is there general agreement on that? Yes.
Madam Chair, one last thing before you finalize your motion. I am going to make a strong appeal that we include at least one member of the AAC because there are such divergent opinions between the two groups. I think it does the applicant a great disservice if you disregard the comments of the AAC. So again, I would suggest that you include one member on the subcommittee and the chair of the AAC would probably be the most appropriate.
Thank you. I'm perfectly open to including the chair of the AAC, but I do want, I do want us to look at what issues we want to cover and seeing an alternate circulation, asking the applicant for a sketch of an alternate circulation plan. So we want to account for outdoor cooling for the staff that's going to be there, and I think there may be ways of doing that. For a better circulation plan, for pedestrian safety, and for preserving more of the mature landscaping. Is that enough of a charge? Commissioner Hirschbein?
And the red lights?
Well, and we, we would, we altered, we changed the previous motion to make red, the red lights part of the signage plan.
Right.
For Raising Cane and Starbucks?
For Raising Cane and Starbucks. So with this, setting up this as a subcommittee, I'm perfectly willing to sit on it because I do have strong opinions. I don't have technical skills, but just strong opinions. And if we can, in such a way that we allow them to come back to us relatively quickly.
And so you are, Madam Chair, to clarify, you are continuing this item to have a subcommittee meet in the interim before the item comes back?
Continuing it to a date uncertain. Comments on the motion? I, I think I made the motion, do we have a sec, Maria made the motion?
I seconded it.
Michael seconded it, okay.
We have, the chair is going to be on the subcommittee, who's the other member?
Commissioner Hirschbein and Commissioner Song.
Can we have three people?
Yes, you can.
If not, I'm happy to go off of it.
No, I just wanted to make sure, and I want to make sure it's three, I think you guys are awesome. Be very happy.
For the director, is that appropriate?
Yes.
Given that we only have six members of the commission?
Yes.
Okay. Right, so can we call the roll on this?
Commissioner Irvin? I'm sorry. Commissioner Irvin?
Yeah, sorry.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewin?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Vice Chair Maruzzi?
Yes.
And Chair Wermuth?
Yes.
Does anybody, would, anybody like to take a 10-minute break? So we'll reconvene at 8:20? This isn't a public hearing item, although both applicants are here for questions, I believe. And the item is Tarif Talala of CHIC LLC for Land Use Permit Amendment Approval to Extend Current Hours of Operation and Six Month Land Review Use Permit 19102 as required by the Planning Commission. And the recommendation is approval. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, good evening. As introduced, this is application submitted by The Village, which is formerly known as Village Pub. This evening, the applicant is requesting the two things, which is approval of the six-month review for land use permit number 19-102 and approval to start its daily operation at 6:00 AM instead of 10:00 AM. As you may recall, the planning commission reviewed the business's land use permit amendment application back in February, which proposed the extension of hours of operation as well as conducting outdoor sound amplification and live entertainment. At that time, the planning commission approved the application subject to conditions of approval, which included the requirement of a six-month review. On September 14th, staff visited the business and met with the business owners and confirmed that the business complied with the conditions of approval except for the requirement of the implementation of the security plan, Village Pub dated March 1st, 2013. The business is not in compliance, excuse me, in conformance with this particular language because the security plan has been since amended and approved by the police department in July of this year. And the security plan that's noted in the land use permit is no longer applicable. However, the business has been implementing the amended security plan since July of this year. The business is requesting a land use permit amendment to start its daily operation at 6:00 AM instead of 10:00 AM. As applicant mentioned earlier during the public comment time of this meeting, the business is going through a rebranding process and trying to put a stronger emphasis on the food service aspect of the business operation. Under this land use permit, the business is permitted to conduct the different types of activities, including indoor live entertainment. Indoor live entertainment is allowed during the business hours under the current land use permit. Should the planning commission approve the application that's submitted, it would allow the business to start its indoor live entertainment at 6:00 AM. Based on the latest conversation that the staff had with the business owners, the business will not conduct indoor, excuse me, indoor live entertainment between 6:00 AM and 10:00 AM. The business is requesting and planning to conduct indoor ambient background music and the background sound of sports programs that are shown on big screens. As you are aware, development services receive multiple comments from the general public, and these are just the general concepts that are brought up by those individuals who submitted the comments to the city. The residents are concerned about the potential noise generated by indoor live entertainment, which is conducted between 6:00 AM and 10:00 AM. And the staff would like to stress that the business has confirmed that it will not conduct indoor entertainment between 6:00 AM and 10:00 AM. And the residents also concerned about the conformance of the business to the required conditions and city regulations. And also, it was mentioned that the time given to the six-month review is insufficient because of the current COVID-19 pandemic. The comment stated that because of the conditions that are imposed on the business, the time was not sufficient to conduct a comprehensive analysis. When this application was received, staff forwarded all materials to multiple city departments. And the development services received no questions, comments, or concerns regarding this application by the other departments. And the staff also finds that the request to start daily operation at 6:00 AM is not really going to change the nature of activities that currently take place at the site. And no modifications to the outdoor live entertainment or outdoor sound applications proposed as submitted. And the business is not proposing any increase in the amount of seating. And based on the information the development services received from the code compliance, there are no recent complaints filed for the business. That said, the staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the proposed change of hours of operation and allow the business to start its operation at 6:00 AM and change the language in condition number 28 accordingly. And for condition number 27, just to change the name of the security plan that's required for the business to implement. As I mentioned earlier, the security plan, which was originally adopted when the previous land use permit number 12-047 was, was approved, this particular security plan is no longer applicable. And the police department review and approve the most current security plan, which is called the Security Plan Inner Rim Amendment, Village Pub. So just to update that information. And also the condition number 28, based on the staff's findings, staff recommend the planning commission to meet the requirement of a six-month review unless the planning commission decides that extending or requiring additional time is necessary. And based on the comments that are provided by the public, the staff is actually proposing to amend the conditions of approval, number 11, to clarify that indoor live entertainment is not going to be permitted between the hours of 6:00 AM and 10:00 AM. And this concludes the staff presentation. The staff applicant and code enforcement officer, Mitch Nabaham, they are all available to answer any questions, you may have, thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Are there any? I, if there aren't any, I have a couple. The, what is the change in the security plan? You, you said that it's changed, but you didn't tell us in any of the reports what items.
The main, the difference between the previous and the current security plan is that the previous security plan required a certain qualifications for security officers. They were supposed to meet the state regulations. However, the applicant has stated that finding, security officers who met this qualification was very challenging, and it was also challenging for them to employ such, the required amount of security officers. So the amount of security officers has been reduced. And then also, the, the security plan omitted the language about the minor, but obviously the business needs to conform to the, the serving of alcoholic beverages and not permitted to the minors and, and so forth.
If there's more security officers, what, who's required and for how long, and is it when they're serving alcohol?
Could you please repeat, I'm sorry, it was dropped.
Can you explain what the reduction in security officers is?
Yes.
You're saying it's reduced, you haven't told us how.
Oh, the number has been reduced, it's actually included in attachment. So the different amount of officers required, but for the requirement of officers for Thursdays through Saturdays, the previous security plan required a minimum of three security officers to be provided between Thursday through Saturday from 9:00 PM to 10:00 PM. The number has been reduced to two officers in the amended security plan. And then also, for the officers for the hours of, between 10:00 PM to close of business, Thursday through Saturday, has been reduced from six to four officers.
Thank you. The other question I had was, is there, is alcohol permitted from 6:00 to 10:00 AM?
Yes, it is.
Is that typical for breakfast?
The, the regulations about when the business is permitted to serve alcoholic beverages to its client is regulated by the ABC. And the serving of alcohol for breakfast, I think that is depends on the business and the type of ABC license they are permitted with. But the applicant can evaluate this information to see that's something, a standard practice in the industry or not.
And then, the other questions I had, were ambient music indoors in the morning? Is that typical in other breakfast restaurants? I have no problem with the TV, I'm just wondering about the music. Because the neighborhood complaints are really about music that early in the morning.
The applicant can certainly provide you the answer to your question because they are the expert in the industry. I'm just comparing, when this application was reviewed back in February, staff created a table which compared what kind of activities are permitted to different businesses in the CBD zone. So I am just quickly reviewing the information. My apology, the summary that I created when the application was reviewed back in February, that was actually, included different uses, not a full-service restaurant. So I request that you direct a question to the applicant.
And then the last question I have is... And then, the last question I have, is it is within our purview to extend the requirement for a review, given the neighborhood concerns about the prior history of this business?
Yes.
Are there any other questions to staff? Are there questions of the applicant?
Yes, I would like to clarify some of the questions that you asked, just for your ability to know where we were coming from. You specifically asked about the security and the, what changed in July? And the, they are still trained, they are still with the Department of Consumer Affairs for all our security officers. There was just a PSO versus a guard card. And we just asked that because many, many people in the industry, actually standard across the board is the guard card, that we could do that. And the ABC and the police department both said since that's a DCA, Department of Consumer Affairs, that we were allowed to go back to guard card because we have had no complaints, as she said. The second thing is the ambient music is only, it will be less, it will stay within the notice ordinance. We, we aren't trying to turn the subs on or anything like that. We're just trying to have like background music like you would find at a cafe. And to serve like alcohol in the morning is more like a mimosa. You know, like when you go to Pinocchio's or Moxie's who are also open this early in the morning? It's just a breakfast, more of a breakfast alcohol. You're not going to see a large amount. This is not to create a party atmosphere. Our desire is to create a breakfast with like, sure, we'll, we'll have mimosa's and make it fun, but that's our, our goal and part of our, you know, we, we love selling food and we want to see that increased food sales. So we just want to assure you guys, we're not trying to break any noise ordinance, we're not trying to be loud at all. We're trying to sell food. And yes, we, we have the, the ability to sell alcohol, but that's, no one really wakes up in the morning. And, you know, we, we definitely don't want to like say, we're going to get people sloshing. So we just want to make sure that you know where our heart is on that.
Okay. Are there other, Commissioner Lewin?
Oh, I thought you were opening this for comments. I don't have any questions of the applicant.
Thank you very much, David and Teresa. This is before the commission now. Commissioner Lewin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that the staff has done a terrific job on this in terms of, I think the community pers, the community issue is ambient noise and they, they didn't want loud music to be played between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 a.m. And the staff's solution to prohibit that, as part of their recommendation, I think, resolves that issue. I would support doing another six-month review, because I think it's wise to do that and so that the community has faith in us. And then I, I really want to see them succeed. We have a tough business climate and you've got a long-term restaurant that wants to start serving breakfast. And I think it's very reasonable what they're asking. So I really like everything, the only modi, I would, I would move this forward after listening to everyone with the, with the one modification of having another six-months review to make sure they're, they're in compliance.
Commissioner Hirschbein.
Yeah, I'm in agreement 100% with Commissioner Lewin on that. I'd be willing to make a motion if that wasn't a motion, if it is a motion, I'll second it.
Are there other comments? I have one. My only concern is I would like to take the reviews through the end of COVID. Because of the history of neighborhood complaints, we actually had more neighborhood letters than we, we had after the original complaint in this instance. So I think there has been a, a level of concern that we won't really be able to until restaurants are open till 2:00 a.m. and we can get a feel for what's going on.
Couldn't we do that at the next six-months review?
We could do that, yes.
Because if there's no complaints between now and six months from now, I don't see the need for that. If there are complaints, then I agree, we should re-review it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other comment? Can you call the roll?
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewin?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Vice Chair Murzey? And Chair Wilmack?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes unanimously. Much success in your restaurant and we hope it works out beautifully for you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is item 4A, which is a discussion that the planning commission asked for regarding revisions in the food desert overlay zone. And we wanted to provide these comments, not just to staff, but also to council. For people's information, the Tower Convenience Store was called up to city council by two of the city council members. And so I think our comments would be good to go along with that.
Madam Chair, I do have a PowerPoint presentation, if you'd like me to go through that, to give you some additional information and background in terms of where you might like to go with specific conditions.
I think that would be helpful. The items that I wanted us to cover would be how we, how we would get to criteria for actual food, for food and percentages, to look at the college overlay zone, and also to look at a recommendation that we do something more specific, like this, that, that the city council will have to do something more to get a major grocery store into that area, that this may not be enough.
Okay. With that, let me go ahead and go into the PowerPoint presentation. One of the things I wanted to do was to just give a little bit of background, because there were some questions when we discussed the Tower Market item. In terms of the grocery store types that would be permissible, these types were discussed both at the May 13th Planning Commission meeting. They were reviewed by the subcommittee that was appointed, and then also reviewed again at the June 10th meeting. But in terms of the formats, we had looked at what the industry standards are, and it would include everything from a small grocery store, which is defined by the industry as a grocery store that's between 5,000 and 10,000 square feet, typically not associated with a national chain, but does carry a full line of perishables, dry groceries, and canned goods. It would also include the traditional supermarket and other types, including fresh formats, which are defined as your organic food stores, such as Whole Foods Sprouts, the limited assortment stores, such as Trader Joe's, Aldi Grocery Warehouse. Based on the square footage, it would not include the super warehouses, nor would you typically find those types of stores locating in this particular food desert area that we've already identified, just based on the number of rooftops that are there. One of the things that I need to make sure that you're clear with is that convenience stores, which are defined as having less than 5,000 square feet in floor area, and do not offer a full line of perishables, dry groceries, and canned goods, are not included. So I just want to make sure that that was clear, that that type is excluded from the food desert overlay as a qualifying grocery store. So again, I just wanted to review that with you. In terms of our minimum threshold, a qualifying grocery store is between 5,000 and 60,000 square feet. City Council actually modified the upper square footage limit. We had looked at a 40,000 square foot. City Council wanted to increase that. And then it has to have a full line of dry groceries, canned goods, perishable groceries, which include meats, dairy, and produce. And it's really the green area that it appears that you all would like to get more specific on. And so we'll, we'll talk about that here in just a moment. In terms of the ordinance and additional criteria that we put in there relative to percentages, there's a couple of things you need to keep in mind. We could get very exacting on this. But keep in mind that we're going to have a low volume of applications. This isn't going to be like cannabis, where we've got, you know, 75 applications in process. You're only going to see a small handful of these applications. And so I don't think that we need to get overly specific on certain elements of these definitions, just based on the fact that you're not going to have a large number coming in, or a large number coming in that would qualify to begin with. Also, keep in mind that the more explicit we get in our definitions, it limits your flexibility in considering applications. That's one of the things that we kind of go back and forth on, and I hear this from city council as well, is we want to be very specific, and yet at the same time, we want discretion. And it's difficult to give you both, so just keep that in mind as well. As was discussed at our previous meeting, we also need to make allowances for specialized markets that help to address food desert situations and do provide healthy food, such as a butcher shop, which wouldn't offer a full line of groceries, but does offer necessary products, or a green grocer or produce market, where they would have fruits and vegetables, but maybe not a full line of dry groceries. And then finally, another thing to consider is the ability of staff to administer this and to assess compliance. And this will become a little bit more clear as I get into a couple of examples here. In terms of looking at percentages, what percentages should we apply? I went back to the Food Industry Association website. They have a listing, their most recent information is from 2018. In terms of looking at a traditional supermarket format, what percentage of the different departments account for the overall total of their grocery sales? So looking at the departments in terms of dry groceries accounts for 30%. Their meat and fish, 12%. Produce, 10% of their overall sales. Dairy, 11%. Frozen foods, 7%. And then things that are really not the things that contribute to our food desert or satisfying our food desert overlay, alcoholic beverages, your deli, your dry grocery, non-food items, floral, general merchandise, health and beauty. If you look at the breakdowns for a full-line supermarket, 70% is the qualifying food products, 30% is the things that typically wouldn't qualify. The only difficulty in looking at this is this is a larger format grocery store. This is for grocery stores that typically have about 40,000 square feet, and that's the basis for these numbers. When you start getting into the smaller grocery store formats, so 20,000 square feet, 10,000 square feet, these percentages are going to be different. And unfortunately, the Industry Association website doesn't give a breakdown for those formats. And so it's a little bit difficult to take this information and translate it directly to what we want to do. So there is that from a professional organization. Going into ordinances that cities have adopted, there are very few that I can look at from a zoning standpoint, in terms of how to define these things. City of Minneapolis has a certification program for its grocery stores, which is administered by its Department of Health. So keep in mind, this is not a zoning ordinance, and you'll see that as you get into the specifics of it. But it's rather a certification program, and it actually certifies the minimum number of pounds that they need to have, or quantities of containers that they must maintain in stock. And so that becomes a little bit difficult for us to establish as part of a zoning ordinance. And what's interesting is although it addresses things such as dairy, animal or vegetable proteins, fruits and vegetables, juice, whole grains, legumes, it doesn't cover all necessary products for meal preparation. For example, some of your dry groceries, the things that you would need to make meals, flour, sugar, oil, spices, are not required and not covered by this. So again, unfortunately, it's not a perfect example of what we could base our numbers off. One of the things that I think is probably a better example is the SNAP program. And this is the program that is administered by USDA for low-income households. They have two different criterias for certifying grocery stores. And again, this is for grocery stores that want to qualify to offer the SNAP program or the SNAP benefits. And so it's not zoning regulations per se, but I think under their criterion B on the bottom part of the screen, that offers us perhaps a better example. So let me go there and talking about that. To qualify under criterion B, they look at the total gross retail sales of a store. They then take out any non-food sales, so lottery tickets, alcohol, tobacco, other non-food products. They also take out the prepared or heated food sales. So these are typically things that you would see at a 7-Eleven, that, you know, they have the hot dogs on the rollers, the pizza that's sitting there under a light, things like that, they take that out. They also take out accessory food sales. And so basically, those are the snack foods. So they subtract those things out, and what that leaves you with is the staple food sales. And what they require is that the staple food sales must be 50% of their total gross retail sales. So out of these three different examples that we're looking at, this seems to get to really where we would want to go, in terms of establishing a percentage of the grocery items that a store would be required to have. And so that's probably what I would look at. And so here are some things to consider in your discussion. Establish a minimum percentage of sales for the required food products, and those are the dry groceries, canned goods, and perishables, similar to the SNAP program. So we would establish something such as 50% of their sales or their floor area would have to be devoted to those items. The next thing that I might recommend, based on your discussion, is to define and exclude certain products from that category. So for example, you know, the tobacco products, the snack foods that aren't healthy and don't contribute to a good diet, those are things that we could exclude out. And again, the SNAP program has a good definition for that. And then if you would like, we can get into more specificity in terms of the definitions of the terms, dry groceries, canned goods, and perishables. So those were some thoughts that I had relative to your discussion last month. That concludes my presentation and comments, and with that, I'll go ahead and take your input and your direction.
Thank you so much for that. Comments? Commissioner Song?
Thank you, Director, for putting that together. That is excellent. I think we are, we, we want our neighborhood to have the necessary place where they can have a grocery. And I thought about our case quite a bit, and the biggest concern is that if it is a mini-market attached with a gas station, then it's a different business model than a neighborhood grocery store. And by having the outline that the director put together in front of us, I think if we can define what meats, dairy, and produce, which are the perishables, so that anybody who comes in is welcome to take advantage of the desert food overlay, and come into through that application will be much more clear and favorable, rather than another type of business trying to be something else and then use that kind of application.
Other comments? Commissioner Irvin?
I also agree with Maria. And also, we, I guess we should, I would hope that we would try to get as close as we possibly could to having a grocery store there. I know there's a lot of different technical loopholes that will be available to kind of sc-. that will be available to kind of skirt some of those situations. But if we can get as close as we could to having a grocery store there, the markets and the gas stations are not something that the community is looking forward to. And then if we also could have Flynn break down what the categories of those food items are, with the dry food goods, the meat, just break down all of those different categories so we can be clear. And then with the SNAP program, the SNAP program tends to do a lot of dry food and a lot of canned food that tends to be high sodium and hypertension as well. So I just, I just hope that we can get as close as we possibly could to just having a grocery store. Feel that that location has been a food desert for quite a while. And I would hate to just bring something in just to meet that criteria that just, you know, barely meets the goals of getting just enough to get over because the community has waited quite a while for a grocery store. And, you know, I just, I'm kind of repeating myself. I just want to make sure that we can get as close as we can to a grocery store.
Commissioner Hirschhorn, you had a comment?
I'd like to thank Commissioner Fag also, I mean, Planning Director Fag. That was a great presentation. And, you know, the frustration comes out of being able to legislate or craft language that's going to lead to a desired result. And it's, you know, it's not always successful, unfortunately. And sometimes it may not even be that possible. But given what the director is recommending, in terms of a 50% of total sales equals to groceries in the SNAP program, which is what you were recommending, does that mean that you think you can enforce that? Is that something that's enforceable?
That is one of the things I think could be enforceable based on the floor plan of the market. As I had pointed out in the example of the city of Minneapolis, they actually have to have number of pounds or number of cartons. We just don't have time to go through grocery stores and count those types of things. What we can easily do is measure off of a floor plan the amount of square footage devoted to those products. And so, yes, that does become much easier for us to enforce in that we can look at a floor plan, measure, and then determine compliance. So yes, that is possible.
Well, I just want to again emphasize that, maybe I'm being defeatist about this, but regardless of what you put into an ordinance like this, and to Commissioner Irvin's point, if it's not done in good faith, the applicant has a lot of loopholes that he can get around. And then also, once the thing is built and operating, there's very little follow-up to say that, you know, now we're going to take out the spinach and we're going to add hot dogs, or whatever it is. There's just, we're relying on some good faith of merchants and hoping for the best. I hate to say that, it sounds like I'm being defeatist, like I said. But I just, I think we craft it as best we can and hope for the best.
Just to comment on it, the 50% is probably where I wanted to get. One of the things that I didn't like about the tower market and previously, we had the application from 7-Eleven, was they didn't come in with any plan for what they were going to do. They didn't show us shelf space. And they didn't say, and the 50% makes sense for a store like that. If you get to a regular grocery, you might get up to 70% for a full-service grocery. But getting a commitment to 50% for smaller stores would probably put them in the overlay area. And it was part of why I couldn't vote for the tower market. I mean, other than the community's concern about it, which also helped, but I couldn't vote for it as an overlay because they weren't telling us anything of what they wanted to do. So I think our ordinance that we passed was weak in that it didn't have that requirement in it. If somebody came in as a full-service grocery store, you wouldn't worry about them meeting that requirement because that's in the definition of a full-service grocery store. Coming in as a, you know, a store with a history of convenience store, saying they wanted to do something different, I think we needed more from them. And so that's really what I want to say. In terms of a full-service grocery store, I think the city's got to do more. And which means we probably need to give some monetary incentives to get a full-service grocery store. And I think that's something we should be doing. And I think it's something the council needs to look at. And it doesn't come out of planning. Maria?
So, sorry, I'm just being calculated. So if we said something that, like, 30% of shelving or display area should be for perishable, it then, it takes out if they use gondolas, or if you use refrigerators, or it's not even based on sales, because then that we have to see their sales and prove, you know, that they're spending 50%. But if we're looking at it straight from display, which is what retail is, and they can easily calculate the total amount of linear shelving that they're going to be using through gondolas or refrigeration, and then have the percentage of 30%, which is, the 30% I'm using from Director's report on major supermarkets, that if you add up the perishable section, it's about 30%. Isn't that a, one of the ways in which we can easily communicate, hey, this local grocery store needs to have this much percentage of perishable? Not food that goes, not food pre-made that goes bad, but natural gross, I'm sorry, meats and dairies and produce that will go bad over time?
I'm not sure if we can impose the same standard that we get from a full-service grocery where there's 70% food or 72% food. But I think you could save 50% groceries and at least 20% perishables in that. I don't know if you could do the full 30. Commissioner Maruzi?
I'd like to see the director's, I don't have it in front of me, so these 30%, I don't, I'd like to see his presentation again on those two slides that indicate this sort of thing, to see if we're talking about the same thing here. So let me go to, so this is the SNAP. So which of these are, Maria and Kathy, are you?
Industry.
Okay.
So Peter, I rounded up meats and fish, produce and dairy. I rounded up to about 30%.
And what about the other two slides? The one for SNAP and the other, do those apply into what we're talking about here? They seem to.
Let's see, the city of Minneapolis gets into pounds and number of containers. That's, again, one of the reasons why I didn't want to look at that in particular. But under the SNAP program, they require 50% of the total gross retail sales or square footage as staple foods. And as that, they don't include things such as snack foods or the prepared or heated foods, things that you would find at the deli counter.
See, that makes sense to me. I can, and I wouldn't include, I wouldn't base it on sales because we don't know what their sales are going to be, especially if they're trying something new, whatever. But I think the linear feat, if that's how you determine 50%, if it's not based on sales, makes sense to me.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, too. And at least 40% of that being perishables, roughly.
Is that what, I can't see the SNAP, let me look at the SNAP thing again.
I don't think it has, I don't think they did. They just said staple foods, and staple foods might be enough.
What is staple foods?
So staple foods includes perishables. It includes dry groceries. It includes canned foods, and it includes frozen foods. Again, it's very specific in terms of the fact that it doesn't include snack foods, such as, I hate to call out a brand, but, you know, your Hostess products or Little Debbie products, those things are excluded. Sugary beverages are excluded and things like that. So it's really looking at things that are healthy and contribute to providing a balanced meal.
So you're saying ice cream isn't a staple?
Sadly, under the SNAP program, no.
So neither is meat as well?
Oh, meat is.
Yes, meat is. So perishables, which includes meat, dairy, and fresh fruits and vegetables, is included as a staple food.
So what, and foods? Just to clarify, are we saying that 50% of the display area should be for staple foods? And from that 50%, I think I heard 30, I heard 40% should be for perishables?
That's about right, and let Flynn figure out the perishable percentages. It, when I looked at the, the regular groceries had their perishables at about 3/7ths, whatever that turns into, percentage-wise.
Okay.
A little over 40%.
Yeah, roughly.
So what I might recommend is, you've given me some direction here this evening. As Madam Chair has already indicated, the city council member has, council members have called the tower market item forward. As part of that, I will be presenting the Planning Commission decision and recommendation. And I will include your recommendations here this evening that we update the food desert ordinance to include the things that we've discussed here this evening, as well as the monetary incentives. And Commissioner, sorry, Chair, you mentioned one other thing that I should forward on to the city council, and unfortunately, I've already forgotten it.
The only other thing is that we, we have an overlay zone that doesn't make sense. It's the college overlay zone, and we don't have a college there. So we need to think through either terminating that or doing something, some new kind of planning for that area. And that area is pretty broad. The area that isn't as invested in really is those from Vistichino North. And that was Commissioner Lewin's suggestion, was really looking at figuring out how we're going to incentivize businesses in the north end of town.
Yeah, and I will say this, just so you're aware. We have had interest in the former College of the Desert site, which would necessitate an update of the College Park specific plan. We also have a grant application in process to help fund modifications to that plan. And so we do anticipate updating that and agree that it is time for it to be updated based on those changes. So we will be working on that.
Whoa, whoa, you can't just leave it there that you have some interest. Who is interested?
We don't have a submitted application yet, so it's a little premature.
You can always have a sidebar discussion with the director later. Commissioner Irvin?
The last meeting, Paul said something that was pretty interesting. I hate to kind of throw him under the bus, but kind of haven't heard anything from you, Paul, and I was just kind of wondering how you feel. And I know you kind of mentioned the city would need to get behind something like that and support it. And just, you know, if they're really trying to have a food desert zone and bring a grocery store, you mentioned something, you know, along the lines that they should get behind and support it. I just kind of want to hear from you.
Thank you, Mr. Irvin. I think the work that Flynn has done and this commission has done to address the food desert overlay is a significant first step. And then we saw the first applicant come through, and all of us collectively felt, you know, they kind of technically crossed the, they kind of made it, but it wasn't what any of us had hoped for, right? And so now Flynn is coming back. He's suggesting minor modifications. What I was saying two weeks ago, Charlie, is that if that area is going to ever get a major supermarket, it probably requires the city itself to create a specific plan, identify, and really court a tenant. And that, there's a tremendous amount of work and money that goes into something like that. But it is the kind of thing that can be done. And I don't know what the, you know, what the resources of the city are at this point budget-wise. But for example, when we bring in airplanes, in order to get airlines to come here, we provide cash subsidies to certain airlines in order to get these direct flights to support our economy. We did it with the hotel incentive program. In order to develop these high-end hotels, we had to do incentives. And it's way beyond us, is what I was trying to say last time. And I hope I didn't offend anybody. It usually involves an economic director from the city getting together. And that's how a lot of the big shopping centers got built, the VIP Motors, the old, the former dump in Palm Springs that became the new shopping center. And it's, I was just giving my opinion that probably that level or something like it would be required to get, what I think we all hope happens there. So it would be great if the city council could have the funds to come up with a new specific plan. In my mind, everywhere from Gene Autry, north of Vistichino, all the way to 111 and I-10, that big triangle there. But that's me dreaming, right? But did I answer your question, Mr. Irvin?
Yeah, and what you mentioned was that dump area is right there where that raisin cane is. And you can see that it's thriving there with the Lowe's, with the Home Depot, with the restaurants there, all of that. That was a conscious effort by the city to improve that area right there and bring that along. So, you know, I kind of agree with what you're saying. We just, you know, I hope that we really take a look at this and just not put things there that, you know, just to satisfy the zone. And take a real serious look and make sure that we're doing everything we possibly can to bring a grocery store there.
Madam Chair, could I make a comment?
Please.
And I know that we're not supposed to have a lot of back and forth, but it is a discussion. So one of the things we might do is ask the city, is the food desert overlay as far as you want to go? Or do you want to identify a significant plan to attract a full-service grocery store in this area? And find out from the policymakers what their vision is. Because maybe the overlay is all that they want. But we could recommend that because it's a food desert, we would like to see the city undertake a study session or evaluate what tools it has at its disposal to address it in a proactive way. And all of this is not to undermine the value of this food desert overlay because getting small businesses in and providing fresh food is a good thing. So we can make that recommendation if we wanted.
I think we should. I'm seeing heads nod. Commissioner Hirschhorn?
So this is kind of thinking out of the box, and I don't know if it has any legs, so to speak, but is, and it's not us, it's the city Economic Development Director, or maybe- or maybe somebody else in the bureaucracy. But is there a way that the city could partner or somehow fund or subsidize one of the food providers out there? Like a food bank or a co-op or something that would work with the community directly to employ people in the community? Um, it could be a training ground also. It could be like a full, uh, complement of things. It's the, uh, you know, they're getting $4 million to redo the motel. Maybe there's a homeless component to that, training component to that as well. Where it's, it's providing a service, but it's also involving the community in, in training and employment. But it would need to be sort of a partnership between the city and an entity that could, could do that.
In preparation, Flynn, do you want to talk about what you have found with food deserts in terms of grants and other things?
In terms of grants, there really isn't that much available currently. I had done some research a number of years ago with the city of, when I was with the city of Las Vegas. There was kind of this interest in food deserts back, starting in about 2008. There was funding available to do planning for that and things like that. Those funds have kind of tapered off, and we don't see as much of them available in this day and age. And so it's a little bit more problematic for cities to try and solve those problems just because the funding isn't there like it once was. That doesn't mean that it can't happen, but it just takes a lot more work, and you have to dedicate staff and resources to it.
Commissioner Lewin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Flynn, forgive me, there have been so many changes at the city recently. Do we have an Economic Development person? JR, anybody like that? Cause I don't know.
Yes, we do have an Economic Development Director, Jay Verata, who is still in that position. However, the staffing in that department has been cut substantially with the economic challenges we've had here at the city. So like other departments, actually even more than other departments, they have lost staff members, so they don't have tremendous resources at this time.
Yeah, so I'm thinking back, you know, the, these projects, like where the landfill gets remediated and gets turned into, back then, we also had something called a redevelopment agency, which provided a lot of the funding for that. And it still takes 15 years to get something like that done. But I, I feel pretty confident that we should at least recommend to the city that they, that they identify what option, you know, what are their options? Do they own land up there? Do they have, can they, can they dedicate a portion of the cannabis-growing places that we're locating along the freeway to become part of a community development fund? These are big kind of questions for policymakers, but there are some tools out there. So, you know, I, I like asking them the question if they, if they want to do a study of it beyond the food, food desert overlay. Otherwise, I think we can't sit here and come up with percentages that will ever necessarily define the, the outcome that everyone hopes for. We can just encourage certain things to happen.
Flynn, do you want to get a, I think I've got a sense of what we've been recommending or comments, that we look at something in the ordinance about percentages of, of shelf space or floor area dedicated to food as part of the food desert, that we think it's going to take more than, um, the, the overlay? And ask the council, um, how, you know, whether they want to pursue this in a, in a more serious way, because it would take, it would take a different kind of effort. Somebody help me with the rest of the things that we've gotten to, because I'd like to send on to council.
Madam Chair, I think you nailed it. One, I think there's consensus, we would like to increase the amount of staple and perishable food minimum square footage requirements, right?
Right.
Okay. Part two, are they interested in trying to develop a plan that would encourage a full-service grocery store, right? That's, are they interested in that? And then three, the general question of, should the college overlay districts still exist, or should it be repealed? Because otherwise, we're going to have to keep repealing pieces of it as development comes in ad hoc. Those are the three, right?
Yep. Commissioner Song?
Yeah, I would like to further define, instead of square footage is a display area, because square footage could be manipulated in so many different ways. So retail area.
Thank, thank you, Maria. I wouldn't have thought of it that way. It's a good point.
Display area and an equal percentage of prime display area. You don't want the food on the, on the six, six-foot shelf.
Okay, Madam Chair, I've got your comments then. I appreciate that. Thank you. This item does not require a formal vote.
Right.
Flynn, can I ask one last question, please? Madam Chair, may I ask one more question? In what we're doing here, would we accidentally prohibit a bakery or a meat market or a cheese boutique store from being invited in? Or is that just easy to do it in another way?
No, not necessarily. And that's one of the things that Commissioner Song had mentioned the last time, I believe. And so, for example, a butcher shop, using that as an example, they're probably dedicated to 80% perishable food if we keep it that open. A bakery, that's a little bit more problematic. But something like a greengrocer, as I had mentioned before, where their primary, um, sales floor is dedicated to fruits and vegetables, that would be, again, you know, 80, 85% of their selling space is perishable items. So as long as we craft the definition in that way that at least 50% of their selling space is qualifying goods, such as perishables, dry goods, et cetera, it would be able to encompass those types of stores. So butcher shops, greengrocers, those that sell fresh food as the primary, um, primary source of their revenue.
Commissioner Irvin?
Um, I have more of a, a comment. I just want to tell Flynn, thank you for the work that he's done and staff. And, you know, just, I want to say thank you to all of the commissioners for taking the time and, and, you know, Flynn's giving up hours, doing research, shooting in the dark, trying to find something that possibly doesn't exist. I just want to say thank you.
That's exactly what I wanted to say, too. Thank you, Flynn, for doing that. I tried to do a little bit of research myself over the weekend, and I, I got nowhere. So, thank you.
Yes. Uh, moving right along to plan, Commissioner reports, requests, and comments. Commissioner Song, and I know we have one or two other people that have comments. Commissioner Song?
Uh, yes, three quick comments. So number one, the Tower Market is going to the city council. And I, I don't know if you know this, Director, but would they be doing a better job in helping understand what they're actually going to be selling? Second question is, the Ivy Hotel is all over the newspaper. Is it shaping up to come up through the entitlement process? Or is it completely separate because it's a county project? And third is, uh, I know we put the notices out and we get comments from the public. And if we were doing it at the chambers, then they would be showing up. But they're sending written presentations. And as much as I would like to be prepared when they come afterwards or, you know, an hour before, and I know the staff has no control over this, it, it makes me, it makes me ask the question, would I consider the case differently, you know, having this information ahead of time? So how, how do we make this better? That's the question.
Madam Chair, to respond to the question that has been posed by Commissioner Song relative to public comment, it's a very difficult issue because in this day and age with the pandemic, we are really limiting the public's ability to get to you, to offer testimony to you. And so we need to be very careful in terms of restricting their access. And I know it's terribly frustrating for you all when planning staff is sending you multiple emails with letters and comments about items. But I just feel it's so important that we get public comment to you, that you have a chance to review it. Maybe we can spend a little bit more time on this as a discussion item next month and talk a little bit about how we might do a better job of getting that to you and presenting that to you so that you have adequate time to review it. And so maybe if we can do that. And Commissioner Song, I apologize, you had two other questions there, and I've already forgotten.
The Ivy Hotel, and then when is Tower Market going up to city council?
Okay. So in terms of Tower Market, I don't have a specific date yet, but it will probably be at one of the city council meetings in October. On the Ivy project that is being done by the county, technically, the county does not need to follow the city's entitlement processes. However, in a, uh, meeting that they held with the public via Zoom on Monday, they did commit to go through the city's entitlement processes. So it is likely that we will see that at some point in time before the Planning Commission, depending on the level of work that needs to be done to the property and, and what entitlements would be needed for that.
Are there other comments? Commissioner Lewin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Song, I had the same experience the last couple of meetings with so many last-minute email communications. And Flynn, I know you can't change it. I know any meeting I've ever gone to, there's been a packet sitting on my desk at the last second. But we might want to put in the, in the notice of the agenda to encourage people to submit any written comments before noon on the day of an event to help ensure that the commissioners have adequate time to review their comments. I, I know that certain organizations intentionally filed their comments at the very last second as a tactic. And, you know, you can't stop that, but we can advise the general members of the public, you should get this in earlier in the day. That's just, this is an idea, and we can talk about that later. I really wanted to thank whoever has brought the applicants into the Zoom calls. That has made it so much better for me to hear and to see and to understand. So a big thank you to the people that have done that. And that, those are my comments.
I had one just on the same, uh, area, which is, I've learned to scan for, for comments. It's hard to know what staff person it's coming from. And I don't, and it might be easier to scan for things and make sure I read them in advance if it came from a single email and I knew who to look for. Because I think on things, I've gotten, I've gotten similar things from Joanna Naurico or, you know, a, a range of diff, I think I can list about four or five people I've gotten emails from at the last minute, and sometimes I'll miss them. So that's just a thought, and we can discuss that more next week.
Thank you. We'll certainly consider that.
Michael, you had a comment? Commissioner Hirschhorn, sorry, I'm being a little informal.
No, informal is good. It's late. Yeah, and that's my comment. I, I was a little frustrated two weeks ago by the length of the meeting. This meeting is probably longer, and I'm less frustrated, so maybe I'm getting used to it. But, you know, when I signed up for this, we were doing them at, what time did we start? 3 o'clock or 1:30? I can't remember.
1:30.
1:30. And if we were done by 6, it wasn't a big deal. 6:30, we're stretching it. But getting into 9:30, 10 o'clock at night, I'm at some point willing to approve anything just to move the agenda along. And that's not right. I think, uh, this is a, was a relatively small agenda, and, and we did get through the, uh, extension items relatively quickly. But when we get into bigger, you know, real agenda items, like the Village Pub or, um, something that's a little more, or the Chicken Plate, if there's four or five of those on an agenda, we're going to be here all night. So I asked Flynn about this earlier, and I talked to Kathy about it a little bit. Flynn's suggestion was that we bring this up as an agendized item from time in October to talk about ways we might speed the process along or divide the meetings up or do something differently than we're doing now to the goal of ending the meetings sooner to keep us all kind of alert. And, um, uh, so I'm, I'm hoping we can talk about that next month.
Commissioner Maruzzi?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I, I think the issue really is that the council felt that they, they wanted the meetings to start at 5:30 because of the issue of people who are working, which is a legitimate concern. On the other hand, you know, they seem to, and I guess Commissioner Lewin could speak about this, get used to the idea of staying till midnight or whatever and working on these issues. But I don't know if they should expect volunteer, well, we're volunteers, we're not getting paid. It's not our job. And for us to have to regularly stay until 10 o'clock at night or later, that might be asking a lot of volunteers. And I, and I think I can think a lot, you know, a lot clearer in the afternoon. I think it's, it's more, it's fair for the applicants. I think it's fair for everybody. So I don't know if we have to address this with the council. I don't, I don't know if the staff can do much about it.
I, I did address it with the council, and I was told this is not an item that someone was willing to die on a hill for, or their hill, or whatever. So I think it's going to be up to us to express our, um, concerns to council as a group, if that's what we choose to do. But there's also things we can do internally that don't require council approval. And that's what I'd like to discuss, uh, next month.
Without shortchanging the applicants, you mean?
Yeah.
Commissioner Irvin?
I'm a working person, so I would be taken away from work doing 1:30 or 1 o'clock. So, um, 5:30 kind of helps me out, being a working person.
Well, I, I don't think it's going to happen anyway, because council's not in favor of it, and they dictate it. So I, I don't think that, that's not on the table right now. That's something that could happen later on, but it's not something that, that they're going to take up right now. That's the message I got.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and include that for a discussion item on our next agenda, along with the public comment issue. We'll kind of combine those into a single discussion. I'm happy to report at this point in time, we only have two items scheduled for our first meeting in October. So that will probably give us adequate time on the agenda to, uh, address those items and flesh them out a little bit more. So we'd be happy to include that as a scheduled agenda item.
And just for people's information, we've had a couple of items appealed. The Motors was appealed by, to, to city council, or one of the consulars pulled it up. And there's an item on this week's agenda, the 7-Eleven Market is in front of council as well, which is fairly typical if we turn things down. Commissioner Song?
Thank you. So based on learning today and Commissioner Hirschhorn's comments, because of the COVID-19, when we see applications in which they ask for extension of their entitlement, I, and I believe the chair was also mentioning- I believe the chair was also mentioning that these items could go to consent if we believe that they have merits. And now that we are hearing, you know, the justifications, the problems with utilities, and how difficult it is to develop and to finance, maybe that could be a category that we could look for its merits and the challenges of COVID, and then send them to consent agenda, and that would help us to reduce the length of our meeting time as well.
I'll just respond to that. The items are actually public hearing items, so unfortunately, we can't put them on consent. We would need to amend our code in order to put them on a consent calendar.
Which is why I tried to speed them up tonight by suggesting that we go through them quickly. Can we leave this for the next discussion item? Clearly, it has all of us animated and willing to stay up late to talk about it. Are there any more items for us? Can we go to the director's report?
And I think you've already covered the director's report for me. So with that, and at this late hour, I don't have any additional items for you. Thank you.
Okay. That being said, I am going to adjourn the Planning Commission until 5:30 Wednesday, October 14th.
Bye, Jim.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye, Jim.
Good night.
Say say.